I'd like to call the meeting to order on January 22, 2020. Will first join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do have one form filled out for public comment today. If you are considering speaking, please do fill out your form and bring it up. And if you do have any documentation, that should be given to our administrative Sharon for the record. Mary Ann Cruz, would you like to come up and speak, please? You have three minutes. And you can actually just sit a little bit. That's fine. Please identify yourself.
My name is Mary Ann Cruz, I live in Bend.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deschutes County Outdoor Lighting Ordinance was edited in 2016 to include outdoor and greenhouse light fixtures. The majority of the 1994 ordinance was left intact with no mention of LEDs. LEDs are a common bulb by today's standards. They have replaced existing lighting in many cities, including Bend. Color is a major consideration with LEDs. Lighting with lower color temperatures has less bright white-blue light in its spectrum and is considered warm. Higher color temperature sources of light are rich in bright white-blue light. International Dark Sky Association and the American Medical Association recommend that only warm light sources be used for outdoor lighting. Exposure to bright white-blue light at night has been shown to harm human health and endanger wildlife. IDA's recommendation is to use lighting that has a color temperature of less than 3,000 Kelvin. A well-written ordinance with proper lighting installed will save the public money and increase safety. Thousands of cities have adopted such standards, which are a great tool for a community to use to control and enforce light pollution, including glare, trespass, and skyglow. Why should Deschutes County be concerned about light pollution? At least 30% of all outdoor lighting in the U.S. alone is wasted mostly by unshielded lights. That adds up to $3.3 billion a year and the release of 21 million tons of carbon dioxide a year. Numerous studies have shown that artificial light at night has multiple negative effects on humans and deadly effects on any type of wildlife, including birds, amphibians, insects, and mammals. There is no clear scientific evidence that shows increased outdoor lighting deters crime or improves safety. While brighter lighting may make us feel safer, poor outdoor lighting can actually reduce personal safety. The U.S. National Institute of Justice states, "We have very little confidence that more lighting prevents crime." That improved energy efficiency of LEDs allows for reduced illuminance and without compromising safety. Deschutes County can have it all. LEDs with a warm color temperature less than 3,000 Kelvin included in a dark sky-friendly ordinance, energy will be conserved, safety and security will be enhanced, human health improved, wildlife protected, and nighttime environment will be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you for coming.
I want to say, yeah, thank you very much. You sent an email to us and I invited you to come speak during our public testimony. So, you know, it's a great effort to think about the dark skies and, you know, how valuable they are in our community. So, the big picture would be, you know, maybe an annual work plan of community development to be discussed in the future. So, there's ways to plug this in and have this discussion. So, this is the way to start the process. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And there will be a showing of dark skies at the Sisters Theater on February 5. So, I believe it's like at 6 o'clock, is that?
Sisters High School.
Oh, Sisters High School. Sorry, I missed the one at the theater. So, now it's the high school. So, 6:30. Okay, it's an hour long if you're interested in following up. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Ron Bozell?
I am Ron Bozell, known as Rondo in town for some time. I'm an activist, been living here for almost 30 years. And I'm not going to talk long, I just want to introduce a subject, a number of subjects that, quite frankly, is an elephant in the room every day. Parental alienation, separation of our children from our parents, and the criminalization of fathers. And these are things that cause poverty and despair in our community every day. And, quite frankly, put people in our jail unnecessarily. And that's all I'll say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rondo. Yes, we are aware because Oregon does have as many foster children as the state of New Jersey, which has 9.1 million of the population. So, when you look at why does Oregon have so many children in foster care? We need to get to the root of it. Thank you for pointing it out today. We have our consent agenda.
So, fairly long today. I had several that have a little bit more discussion. Number one, number three, number 11, 12, and 13. So, Commissioner DeBon or Commissioner Dyer have any others, but I would move approval of everything except those.
Sure, that's fine. I'll second it.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, we'll start out then with item, on the consent agenda, item number one, the signature for the nonharassment, nondiscrimination policy for the county. Thank you.
My question, I appreciate that it was given to us with a red line copy so we could see what had been changed. I had a question about, there's a list of people to report harassment or discrimination to if you're an employee of the county. And two people were added, county legal counsel and county internal auditor. I have a concern if we add legal counsel that we would be in a bind where the person making a complaint against someone in the county might be, they'd have a conversation with the complainant, but they represent, legal counsel represents the county in defense of things. So, it would almost kind of prevent you from doing it. So, I would probably prefer not to have legal counsel, not that he wouldn't be a good person to talk to, but it's kind of to me like a plaintiff in a car accident going in and talking to a lawyer, and then the lawyer defends the insurance company after that or something. So, that was just a thought I had, and I don't know if it's been discussed before, but I'd bring it up.
Yeah, I think the reason that it was added was because they have received complaints. But I think, I mean, I hear what you're saying in terms of listing them versus just sort of naturally receiving a complaint.
Yeah, if they receive a complaint, they know what to do with it. Say, "Well, I can't talk to you anymore, but here's where you go." But that's just my concern. And once we list it, it seems like they have the equal status with everybody else, so. What do you think?
I think that's a good catch. We did have some concerns when we first reviewed it that that could create some conflict issues. But as Kathleen indicated, we acknowledge that we tend to get in that reporting loop anyway, whether we have any interest in being in that or not. So, but yeah, that probably, I think, would be cleaner to remove it and at least minimize that potential for conflict. We're pretty sensitive to it, and to the extent that we get that type of, say, a whistleblower-based complaint or some sort of a complaint workplace, we try to direct that to HR unless, of course, HR is the source of the complaint or the, so, the subject of the complaint. So, yeah.
I would move to remove that. The other question I had is really just kind of updating things. One of the additions here is that harassment can be about gender identity. And is that a protected class now or has legislation made that a protected class? Is that, I didn't really know what the status was.
So, it is considered a component of gender. So, we could just leave it as gender. Gender identity is considered under that. There was a lot of feedback from department leadership to expand that specifically in the definition to say gender or gender identity. That tends to be a more inclusive way to approach the concept of gender.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think it is a different concept. So, I'm not bothered by it. I'm just saying, I just was wondering if that's legally, the laws made that transition or whatever.
We looked it up a couple of years ago, and it is a protected class. So, if you look up the definition of gender, gender identity is listed.
Kind of like a subunit of gender and some of the, certainly some of the literature on it of late is it tends to be more in the subjective category, at least for folks encountering that issue as opposed to, say, gender that might have more objective indicia. So, it's certainly a landmine of issues. We recognize that, that, you know, one could be gender identity insensitive without recognizing they are because the cues that we're processing might not lead us to that conclusion. And I think that's something, as a society, everyone's starting to struggle with and figure out the best way to address those. And this was just indicating that as that subunit of gender, if you're, have a, you know, a malice animus and if you're somehow motivated by something that's not appropriate and it manifests in a gender identity issue, that that's something that we're concerned about and would protect.
Those are my only questions.
You brought up the internal auditor.
Well, just that it was a new listing. I didn't object to it.
Right. You don't object to that one?
No.
Okay, all right. Because I was just like, oh. But the legal counsel then should be, will be removed?
That's the note that I made here.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So, I'll acknowledge that it sounds like there's support for removing legal counsel, but it was also, it would also be implied if it was included that it would be acknowledged that either, you know, implied or, you know, perceived or actual conflict would be acknowledged right up front. So, I mean, I don't know that either way is going to be wrong, but yeah, by removing, I'd support removing it.
Other than that, is there something else? I'll move approval of county administrator's signature of Deschutes County Policy on HR-10, Nonharassment, Nondiscrimination Policy.
With proposed?
With that proposed change, yeah.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, so now we go to item number three.
Yeah. And this one, I, apparently the Chair, let's see, this is the, yeah. Chair noticed it also that this whole proposal is about the Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office, but on page 14, it's like the project start date and the grantee is listed as the City of Bend Police Department. Talked to Jason Maniscalco. So, I was wondering if, was it type, I didn't know how they got involved because I didn't see anything else that got them involved, so. But it could be incorrect, is what I'm saying.
Hi, Captain Darren McMaster, Deschutes County Sheriff's Office. And the marijuana grant, the Illegal Marijuana Market Enforcement Grant Program is a joint effort between the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office, the Bend Police Department, the DA's office. The team is housed over at the location where the code team currently is. And so, the Bend Police Department has their own detective that the City of Bend pays for. The Deschutes County Sheriff's Office has two detectives that we pay for. And then there's some other personnel, like Kathleen Coop, for example, Danielle Martel, who's an analyst, that comprise the team and do different functions on that team. They share assets. There's some things like equipment that's in the grant and some other things that we share assets for. But we're not paying, for example, for the Bend PD detective in any way. Jason Maniscalco's name is in there because he is the code team operational supervisor. And he doesn't direct the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office detectives, but they coordinate with each other. They share information about illegal marijuana cases so that the code team isn't necessarily taking marijuana cases. They're giving that information to the Illegal Marijuana Market Grant detectives to work on. And then if, you know, conversely, if our marijuana detectives find information about heroin or methamphetamine or whatever the case may be, they're handing that information over to the code team to work on those issues so they can focus on marijuana. That's the only reason why Jason Maniscalco's name is in there and there's a reference to Bend PD. This is actually a grant that's underneath the Sheriff's Office as the lead. So...
So, you're saying it's supposed to be in there?
Yes.
That was the first thing, was it supposed to be?
Yes.
And then why? And I just was surprised that that was, they're listed as the grantee contact where the agency works for isn't, but I wondered if it was because of code recognition, you know?
But we're the fiscal contact?
Yes.
Yes. All right. It was interesting. Great. Well, we just did get a report yesterday from the DA regarding marijuana cases, and there were nine cases that he advised us of where they're in, in the court systems. It was an enormous amount of work that the DA's office has done. So, because of what you're doing. Thank you.
I'll make a motion for board signature, Resolution 2020-004, Budget Adjustment for Illegal Marijuana Enforcement.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Well, you know, I'm really glad that we got the additional analyst positions. That's what they talked, the Sheriff's Office and DA and everybody talked about needing more of to kind of track some of this in the, I guess, financial world, et cetera. So, I'm anxious to see what the report is a year from now, like what you said, the one we got yesterday, so.
Right. Nine different cases that were being in the system.
So, that's great. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
So, I had just asked that this be withheld just briefly so we could talk about it a little bit. I don't think anybody from Fall River Estates Special Road District Board is here, but we've certainly had a lot of people here. We've had more involvement with this one than all the other road districts separate. I did look at the statute, you know, where we're thinking about, well, we've got this, what we have is a member leaving the Fall River Estates Special Road District Board and a proposed new member. And we had not processed this with the other regular ones, other road districts, because we'd had homeowners association headed, they'd asked for an ethical and a possible criminal investigation. We've since, I think in the third, we got notice that both of those had been no action or nothing wrong found. So, we're kind of begin confronted with, well, should we appoint this person or do something else? And I did look at the statute, and it does say that vacancies on the board shall be filled by county court by appointment for an expired term. And we've been kind of working that, well, we have to appoint their suggestion. In my view, we could talk about and we find our own appointee to put on the board if we wanted to try to build a piece between the different two organizations. And I know that that's a different position than Commissioner DeBon has had. But I, after kind of talking about it, we were going to go out to the board, the river, the road district board meeting, and we were going to go look at the neighborhood, I think it was two weeks ago. And because of the snow, we couldn't make it that day. So, I personally am, I guess I'm prepared to go ahead and appoint Mr. Brown, but I do, with the hopes that things improve. I've heard from people that things are improving between the road district and the homeowners' district, but I, we can't, I can't verify it, but, because I haven't, I've only talked to a couple of people. So, I hope that's the case. I hope they start to work together better. So, that's my thought about this today. I just throw that out there.
Yes, I'm hoping to attend their next, I believe, under quarterly, their next road meeting. So, we'll get that on my schedule, all right? And hopefully I can be there. Just to, yeah, their community needs to come together, and we acknowledge that. So, do you have a motion then to?
Yeah, did you say anything, Commissioner DeBon?
Yeah, the homeowners association and the road district have been generally the same partnership organization. This is very much bumping the road with the personalities of the community. The road district is like many other road districts. There's, you know, multiple members of the community taking the tax dollars, you know, maintaining the roads. So, that mission, the goal of that three-person board, just like all the other road districts, is pretty clear. So, there was history of the initial appointments in partnership with the homeowners association. So, yeah, it's just one of those kind of twisted situations where maybe we, you know, that group lost track of the history of it, and then all of a sudden people look like they were on different sides of an issue. But I do want to empower that road district to, you know, just maintain the roads. It is a beautiful community with paved roads, you know? So, not even all the road districts have paved roads. So, you know, they live in a wonderful place and, you know, I wish them the best.
Thank you.
I would move approval then of board signature of a letter appointing Ron Brown to the Fall River Estates Special Road District Board. And we could have done this on the consent agenda, but thanking Eileen Winjer for service on the Fall River Estates Special Road District. She's the one leaving the board, but anyway.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, now, I believe we need to reconvene as the governing body for Deschutes County 911.
Was first set of minutes polled, who?
Yeah.
So, that's just polled for future?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess so. It's just some changes I was going to propose, yeah, for the, we could do it for next week.
Sometimes, yeah, it could be read into the record or we'll just do it next week.
I think it'd be easier to do it next week, don't you?
That's fine.
We are now reconvening as the governing body for Deschutes County 911.
Oh, yeah. I'll turn it, yeah, thanks.
Nice big format. It's a larger format.
Oh, that's nice. Oh, we can read it. Good. Person one?
Get one copy.
Good morning. Sarah Crosswhite, Director, Deschutes County, 911.
Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
I am here today asking for consideration of Chair's signature of document 2020-095 for our Notice of Intent to Award Contract for our Overturf Tower Project. This project is the tower that's going to go up on the west side on Overturf Butte. It consists of a radio tower and a small equipment shelter. We did our bid solicited through a publicly advertised bid process, and we had three contractors that submitted bids on December 19. And our low bid was JP Prinz of Bend, Oregon with a bid of $360,000.
This was kind of briefed, the fact that it was coming in front of us yesterday at our 911 user board meeting. So, you know, it's been discussed with all the fire police chiefs, understanding the next steps in this process.
Sorry about the really small plans.
Oh, I think I could read it. No, thank you for the big one.
So, my understanding is the tower itself and the generator have kind of been pulled from that bid process, so that'll be provided by the district, just the specific items. And then just getting that pole up there is going to be the logistics and building a building.
So, what is the expected finishing date of the project once we start it?
We're looking at May, between May and June.
May and June?
Hopefully by June 1st is the goal. Weather permitting?
Yep.
Yes.
There was a pretty positive media coverage yesterday after our 911 meeting also, the TV cameras there, and Bend Police Chief Jim Porter made comments. So, you know, there doesn't seem to be any specific issues that people are stating at this point, acknowledging that once this tower is up, there'll just be that next coverage behind the Butte and a little bit farther west. Which, yeah, it's a shame it's taken so long, but this is the process. You know, construction people are busy through the winter, you know, it's kind of a slowdown period, so we're getting there.
And it's nice, it was, the low bid was from a Bend company, so nice to keep it local. Commissioner Henderson, did you have any comments?
Well, you know, I've said this before, I'm glad we got the plans. That was part of what I'd asked for when we talked about putting this on agenda. I wish, personally, I wish I had the plans before the time I'm actually making a decision because I don't have the time really to look at them. Not that I'm, I just, I read plans, I know what they are, and I just would like to have looked at them a little more deeply. I mean, I'm glad that it's come down. I mean, there's a high bid of 500 and something, but, and the one that we're doing is $360,000. You know, it's amazing, I mean, we're basically put up a pole, have a place for generator, have a place for the equipment and propane, and we have in a trench, bringing in the utilities. You know, we got more plans than I would have on, I mean, it's like, I don't know how many pages of plans there are, but, and we don't, I don't know, do you know what we paid for the plans to do this?
I don't, off the top of my head. I can research it.
Lee, do you know?
No, it was, the design was worked through 911, and we came in partway through to assist with the construction portion of it.
And it looks like AdCom hired somebody to do it?
Local, yeah. CA Rowse was the engineer that did the plans locally.
But?
For the civil engineering portions and utilities.
What was the, what's the reason for a 70 by 70 pad? What, it doesn't seem like, I mean, 70 by 70 is a long, it's huge. I mean, it's as big as here to that wall and from that wall the way out to the other side of the hall. I mean, it's 70 feet's a long ways.
So, part of what has to be constructed is a grid underground for grounding for the equipment? And so, portions of the grounding are pretty extensive. There'll actually be excavation and then wires laid in a grid pattern in the ground. So, part of the cost in excavation is to provide sufficient grounding for the tower, for the pole.
And it needs to be 70 by 70 to do the grounding?
The grounding itself, no, but the combination of the location of the pole, the grounding field, and the location for propane tank, generator, and then the equipment shed, and to locate them all with the proper clearances between the equipment. I think that's the size of the pad that the engineer ended up with.
Yeah, you know, I just, so 70 by 70 is basically 4,900 square feet. So, that's, that's almost the size of the building we just finished at the fairgrounds for the OSU extension and 4A. So, I guess, you know, it's great. It's all generous and there's big spaces and, what's the pole now made out of? I can't, I mean, it's in here, but I can't.
It was originally slated to be a glue lamb beam, but I know it's a wood product. I'm not sure exactly.
So, is it a glue lamb bean? It's a, I see the gloom, I see what could be a glue lamb bean in the center of the pole, and then I see a round thing, and then I see another circle. So, what are the three, what are the two? What, so what are the three, what are the two circles?
So it's, the pole is engineered wood, similar to a glue lamb. The circles have to do with the structural base for the pole, and I, do you have the section of plans?
That's what I'm looking at.
I have to look closely to see what you're.
You cut the only set of plans, yeah.
Well, that's, I wish, you know, we could have.
Sorry.
There's literally 20 pages of plans.
And we got three.
Well, this, well, here's the 20.
Right.
We got one set of them at the time we're making the decision. Looks like a 60-foot tower, glue lamb, or whatever it is.
I can look into the details on the pole placement and the size of the pad and get additional information and respond to your questions.
Well, I just, you know, I just go back, and it's, I've done it with other situation, who's in charge of controlling costs and saying, do we really need 70 by 70 square feet? Could we have done it in 50 by 50? Did anybody ask that question? Do, you know, those are the questions. I mean, to me, you know, and I understand, I've come to understand how everything has to be, you know, multiple, multiple pages of design, and so this probably costs 30 or whatever. I mean, but literally, whole houses get built for 360,000, which have half the square foot, they have, you know, they have foundations, they have, you know, all, probably as many utility trenches or as long ones. They have paved driveways or, you know, maybe as big as all, so I just still ask that question of how do we control the costs when we're meeting with the subs? And I don't know if, once you've got a fixed bid, but.
It does say it's gravel on this plan?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It's six inches of gravel, less than three quarters of an inch, three quarters of an inch.
Yeah.
So, it is gravel pad. At least it's not concrete, you know, 5,000 square feet of concrete.
Yeah. So what's, what's the answer to that question?
Whether, I don't know that the size of the pad was specifically questioned, and as to whether what size was necessary. With the contractor selected, we can look at that and look for savings within the contract. There's allowances for that in our contract with general contractors for value engineering and looking for opportunities. And once you have the contractor on board, it gives you that opportunity to work directly with the contractor for savings beyond the design.
And do you know what page, I didn't really see, we've had discussion, at one point, we're going to take the utility trench out of it possibly, but I, I don't actually know where the utility, I can't tell by looking at this, or I don't know what page to look at for the utility trench, I could probably find it, but do you know what page that's on?
I do not. I don't have a full-size copy.
It's all the way in the front of the tanks, and goes all the way from the front corner all the way back to the back corner. It, it's like a diagonal across the property.
Which one are you saying is the utility trench?
It says it's utility trench right there, that little, that utility.
Yeah, but I thought part of it was getting somewhere. So if, it's just a right angle is all it is?
That's what it was.
It's a left angle, but, but it's just an angle.
Right.
Is that all there is? There's nothing off?
Yeah, it goes off the hill and through the rock.
That's, there's nothing, it doesn't have to go somewhere else, or?
No, it goes, it goes from the pole under the fence line, and then through the fence line to where the tower will be.
Right.
So that's roughly, like, say 40 feet or, so it's like 80 feet of trench? I'm just guessing.
No, I didn't.
So I heard, we also in our work session, didn't we hear that we've, we were going to hire a contractor to oversee this or something?
Yes, a project manager.
And who's that?
Brett Hudson. He works for the sister school district. He's overseeing their projects that they had with the bond. And then he also worked for the Redmond School District when they had their bond. He oversaw their construction projects. And he has worked with our contractor successfully in the past, oversees projects, and he would be our boots on the ground and be able to go up on site, keep, keep in contact with the subcontractors and the contractors. And he's already looking at these, and he's looking at where he can have some cost savings. So he is evaluating that actively.
How much are we paying him?
That contract is with the sister school district.
Correct, and it's.
So we're reimbursing him just at their, at his cost to sisters. So it's a, I don't know what his full-billed in cost is, but that's what we're reimbursing.
The billing rate is, do you have that in front of you? This is just from memory, but it's approximately $85 an hour. And it's an arrangement that various entities in central Oregon have done in the past with, at one time, the High Desert Educational District had project managers that we've utilized that Redmond School District and others have utilized. So it's an agreement between the county and sister school district to reimburse the school district for Brett Hudson's time.
What do you estimate the time will cost?
We, we estimated, right now, we did the contract at a max of 20 hours a week for a portion of the project. We think that it's going to average less than 10 hours a week. There may be a few weeks at the start where it's more, but we think that it'll be, I believe we wrote in the contract around 160 hours total. And that's a, again, on the upper end, and it'll be time of materials, so.
And there's some to exceed as well.
Do not exceed estimate.
Maybe $15,000. Is that the right, right scale?
Again, we'll be paying just for the time that he puts in toward the.
And we're doing that because we're, our own supervisions, we're kind of overwhelmed with all the projects right now.
We're quite busy with the public safety campus and stabilization and other projects.
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Well, this is getting the contractor on board and moving this project forward, so I am in support. I'll move consideration of chair signature of document number 2020-095, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for Deschutes County 911 Public Safety Communications Facility.
Is there a second? No? I'll, I'll second.
Well, you know, I mean, I've been behind this from the get-go. I mean, we authorized this in January two years ago, and we have had a temporary tower there, and, so I'm in support of this idea. I'm, I am getting it done. I'm glad they went out, you know, you went out a second time. But I, I still feel strongly that we need to look at these costs when we're doing projects, and if we need to hire somebody that can look at them and say, well, this, we don't need to do this, or what about saving this? I mean, because it is all public money, and I know we may have the money, but it'll be interesting, for instance, to see at some point how much we've paid AdCom in the last two years. But it's got to be a tremendous amount of money we've paid them. And then, so we don't even know, I can't sit here and ask the two people in charge of this what the design cost. I mean, to me, that's something somebody should know when they come to a meeting like this, so, because this, there's, this is a lot of design you guys can look at too, so. What's your thinking on it, Commissioner Aaron?
I know, it's been an issue, and, okay, you're saying it started in 18, and it's too bad we're looking at 2020 now. It's, it's definitely, I think that cost savings need to be passed on to Rex, that he looks at it and says, okay, are there other ways that we can actually save some money? Because it is, as Commissioner Henderson says, taxpayer money. And, you know, yes, it's a lot of money for just a little tower with a pole. And it, and you're saying, it's really not wood, is it? Is it a wood pole? It's a wood pole.
Glue lamb is, you know, like what you have for beams where they're just, they're laminated, like, could be like 2x4s, or 2x6s, or 2x8s laminated together, and used usually horizontally, not as much vertically, but I've not seen it with a pole, but.
So, will it burn?
I guess that's what you're saying, right?
I would constantly, I would describe it as engineered, so how, how that's put together in manufacturing, it might be slightly different than a glue lamb, but it's an engineered pole that then is rated specifically to the projected worst-case wind loads, the weight that is, that the antenna contributes to it. And that way, the engineers have a known quantity with the pole being engineered and knowing the specific specifications versus a, a wood, you know, versus something that's not engineered.
Okay, will it burn then? It won't burn?
I, I think, like anywhere else, we'd want to mitigate all the fire risk on the, on the site, and it's a fairly open site at this point, and that's something that I think the city of Bend takes seriously with their water tower being placed there as well, so.
Okay. Yes, cost savings would be nice. So, should I then, do I need to second it? Yes.
Oh, I just was interested, well, I, I don't know, I mean, I could, I'm just interested in hearing discussion about.
I can point out, Commissioners, that this is the Notice of Intent to Award today, so the, certainly legal is hearing loud and clear. We'll work with, with Lee and Sarah and, and make sure that the contract we bring back with the contractor is reflective of a statement of work that would, you know, capture every savings possible and, and design engineering that speaks to that. And we're definitely hearing you all loud and clear, and we'll, we'll work on that. I don't know, Lee, would you hope within a couple of weeks we'd be, have that contract ready? Is that kind of the timeline?
That I would expect.
So, and, and we could certainly vet that with the board at a work session in advance of bringing it to you for your, your approval.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it would be. I mean, it's, you know, we have various contracts that come in front of us like this, and I know it's been hard to get someone. And one of the reasons that price goes up is the, it's kind of a given almost in construction, the more pages you have, the more price, because you, you have more things you have to think about. And it's like, well, and you, as a contractor, you don't want to get them wrong, so, so these are, you know, and I haven't looked at the plans, but other than just glanced at them. So I'll second the proposal. I'm anxious to get it done. Let me just, just keep those things in mind.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So, well, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
So, now reconvene as the Board of Commissioners for Deschutes County. Do you want to look at these?
No.
No?
Everything's already done.
Janice?
Janice Garso, Deputy Director of Deschutes County Behavioral Health, and I am here to request board approval and signature of the 2020 contract with our CCO, Pacific Source, for behavioral health services to individuals with OHP. The contract negotiation this time, as many of you are now familiar, included a requirement of CCO 2.0 that behavioral health providers be represented in the global budget, the global health budget for OHP members, and that entailed behavioral health leadership negotiating with our hospital and our primary care partners who serve the Medicaid population in developing this contract and this agreement about services. To summarize the outcome for Deschutes County Behavioral Health, it was positive. We were able to negotiate an increase in our per-member-per-month rates for two parts of this contract. One part is the capitation amount, which is a large amount. Another part is the program allocation amount, which is a smaller amount. Both of those areas experienced an increase in the per-member-per-month rate, which in effect increases the contract amount by roughly, our estimate, $800,000 this year. That may be slightly impacted by the fact that the contract is going to be executed about a month after we had hoped. That will also mean that we will realize a portion of that revenue in this fiscal year, which we did not anticipate, so that was good news. It also did increase our performance withhold from 5% to 8%. That was a compromised position from the larger group's suggestion that our risk withhold be 10%, and our suggestion that it be somewhere in the middle, so we landed on an 8% withhold. And that's, of course, the amount that's held in abeyance based on our performance on some contract metrics, and, and then reconciled at the end of the year and returned to the CMHPs. And it's only withheld on the fee-for-service portion of the contract, not the entire amount. And then, the last piece is that we are now linked as partners in the overall performance around certain quality incentive metrics, and with our health partners. And in that linkage, we have the opportunity to participate in a share of the surplus. This has been a part of the contract arrangement that Pacific Source has had with its health partners for many years, but not necessarily with the CMHPs. So we now, we now have an opportunity to participate in surplus at a 10% rate, which is roughly, actually a little bit better than what the CMHPs overall represent in the total global budget. So that was also a positive, although it's our first year participating in that, and we'll see how it goes. So we're not counting on that revenue, but we're hopeful.
George Conway, Hill Services Director. I want to just acknowledge Ms. Garso for being very persistent and assertive as a fiduciary for the county in a very complicated and, I think, fraught negotiation, and also Mr. Doyle for considerable legal advice and strategic advice, which was very helpful. And I just want to vouch, having followed this closely, that I think this was a very good, favorable outcome, given where we were a number of times in the discussions.
So, apparently there's, what, 47,000 people that follow in this plan in Deschutes County?
Those are not the numbers that we received from Pacific Source. The numbers that we operated on are closer to 37,000.
37,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was, I think it was 36 and some odd number.
So it's still extremely significant with our population if we're approaching 200,000?
Yes.
That, that many people are part of this coverage?
Yes.
So, it sounds like I knew that it was coming, that we were going to, you know, you, it was going to really improve what you could offer and, you know, how the county could actually, the behavioral health could be reimbursed for your work. So it sounds, you, you did, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Very, very, very diligent, so.
Well, I think it's real positive we're able to, you know, focus on the, kind of the feedback loop of being able to get people balanced. You know, this is physical health and mental health, behavioral health, working together, trying to keep people out of the emergency room chronically, you know, getting that per-member-per-month agreement in place with the state legislature defining the dollars, Pacific Source being selected as a CCO, being at the table for this whole discussion. And then, you mentioned the surplus, which is kind of the shared savings or reinvesting profit or whatever from Pacific Source's point of view. So it depends on which point of view you're looking at. But being able to take X amount, whatever it is, and reinvest in most optimum things kind of closes the loop on being able to help people in their most needs.
Yes.
This is a tri-county effort, you know, Deschutes, Crook, and Jefferson. I know that, you know, we're one of the signatories, and the other Commissioners will be taking this up also.
So you don't really think it's going to be implemented February 1st, then? We're too late?
I don't know that we're too late. I mean, I, what, what we will do is, what we have permission to do is hold some claims until the contract is executed, as long as it's executed sometime within the month of February, hopefully the first couple of weeks. So as soon as we have a signed contract, then we can get that to Pacific Source. So, as soon as we have a signed contract, then we can get that to Pacific Source, and they're able to put that through their process, which can take a week to two weeks according to the powers that be at- at the CCO.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no questions. Thanks for taking the lead and working hard to get best he could and getting it done. You know, the last time we had it, it went on for a long time, so it was nice. And thanks, Dave, for helping and being involved with it also. That's good. I think that's a good strategy, and thanks, Dr. Conway, for getting this done, so.
Great team work.
With that, I'll make a motion of Board signature of document number 2020-092, the Pacific Source contract for OHP.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your diligence.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Keith, County Forester. I'm here today to seek Board permission to apply for a grant to the Oregon Invasive Species Council and the Oregon Department of Agriculture. It's a relatively small grant, about $10,000 in grant funds that we'd be looking for. This is actually a new grant opportunity that's being offered through the Oregon Invasive Species Council for basically educational efforts and items related to all things invasive species. So, we particularly focus on noxious weeds. And we're proposing, uh, some upgrades to our trailer that we have. We take and use that at different events, including the County Fair, the Home and Garden Show. It actually travels around to other locations across the state. Other counties use it. Crook and Jefferson County have been using it pretty regularly. More recently, Malheur County started to use it. It also goes to the State Fair. So, the idea would be to do some updating. This trailer was bought in 2007, and we did some updating to the outside of it a few years back. And these funds would be partially used to upgrade some of the displays on the interior of the trailer as well as buy some additional brochures and educational material that go in the trailer for all the partners that use that trailer at the different events across the state to use. And that's a- that's a brief summary. entertain any questions?
Can you explain Oregon Invasive Species Council a little bit?
The council is made up of, uh, a variety of individuals that represent different state agencies, Oregon Department of Agriculture, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Oregon Department of Forestry have representatives, as well as, um, representatives from, just public representatives from other parts of the state that are focused on invasive species. So, include, that includes noxious weeds, but also, um, you know, invasive animals like feral hogs or things like that. There's a particular focus and concern about aquatic invasive species, and that's something we're looking to add more information in the trailer to. So, in particular, a couple of species that are of pretty great concern lately to Oregon are zebra and quagga mussels. Those are in a couple of different states not too far away from us. And infestations in water bodies like Lake Mead, for example, cost literally millions of dollars to try to keep the dam functioning because those species will- will take over infrastructure and boats and those sorts of things. So, uh, the- the state has been screening for those. So, if you've ever come into the state, see a boat inspection station, that's the focus of those. But also, the need to get the word out to people of why they need to, you know, when they're transferring from one body of water to another, particularly in a different region of the country and then coming here, that they're making sure that their equipment is cleaned off and those sorts of things. You know, a small amount of prevention dollars could potentially prevent millions of dollars in trying to control those, because once they get established, they're basically almost impossible to completely eradicate.
Thank you.
So, I'd move approval of grant application to the Oregon Invasive Species Council.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Uh, this is the weed wagon, which has got its own history. We see it at the County Fair of a year, and I think I'd sent you a note, a vision of what could we do, kind of adding fuel reduction and, uh, you know, just community education around that. And I was thinking of the County Fair specifically, so there's a future conversation in that.
Yeah, exactly. And- and we can definitely add some materials related to wildfire and defensible space in there as well.
Well, and just the basics of, you know, what- what species are the very flammable ones? What does it mean to be zero to five from your house? You know, just, maybe just that's the only focus area, because it's not the whole Project Wildfire statement, but it is, you know, kind of the species that are very flammable in the dry seasons.
Um, Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Hello? Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Will Groves, Deschutes County Planning. I have for you today a revised draft decision in the Lower Bridge PUD. We met last week, and you had provided some comments on that draft. And accordingly, staff has made those edits. Most of them were typographic edits that were easy to make. You had some questions specifically with regard to a condition of approval AP that had to do with the topographic survey. I tried to capture your comments and provide some better clarity on what the function of that, what that survey was for and the scope of what was required. And in addition, I wanted to respond to if the survey had already been conducted. They certainly didn't need to conduct another one and just had to use accurate information. Hopefully, that meets your needs, and I'm here to find out if you are willing to consider signature and if you have any additional concerns that have come up in the time since our last meeting.
So, I- I have some additional concerns. I hadn't read it as closely before the last meeting. And so, I reread it, and, um, I guess, I have a couple, several things. So, do you want me to just start with asking them, and then we'll see where we are? One just general thing was, um, I don't know how to say it. I'm voting in support of this development, but, you know, I understand the downsides of it to people that live there, the questions about environmental issues, other things, the kind of the configuration, while, you know, how it'll cause, affect the view of people, et cetera. And this kind of reads like we enthusiastically endorse this. And I guess that's just a tone thing that, and it was written, I know, or the, as happens, the winning party often comes up with the language in this. But there's- there's a couple of things along that line. For instance, there's one place where they actually repeat the same sentence twice to about their string, and I can show you that on. But then there's some other things that are just like, so I don't- I don't remember what our timeline is. And I, if- if the proponent is adequate with this, it's- it's one thing. But I do want to ask about some specific areas, so that's just a general overview. So, the first one I have is on page eight of the decision. And it says in the second, we're under the finding about landscape management. It says, "The Board finds that compliance with the rimrock setback above is determined as part of the landscape management site plan review that occurs prior to the application for a building permit." Is that true? I mean, um, will landscape, I- I know what landscape management is, and I've worked with it before, but will it do that? Will it ensure the rimrock part of this? And are we sure of that? Because it sounds like we believe that strongly, and I really don't know that. And so, that's an example.
That's a great question. So, this is, each of these homes will be subject to additional land- uh, land use review. So, prior to building permit, applicants for a home will come in and apply for landscape management. As part of that landscape management review, there are conditions that require that they be at least 50 feet back from any rimrock that's located in the property. Moreover, this decision specifically constrains the applicant and future owners from seeking exceptions to those standards. So, there's some safety valves that are normally built into the code that say, "Hey, you have an old lot that was formed back before we cared about rimrock at all. You may not have a developable lot now, and there's some exceptions that allow accommodations in special circumstances." And so, the applicant proposed, the hearings officer proposed, and the applicant accepted a condition that said they would not seek those exceptions. So, the question before you today, as the hearings officer and applicant have framed it as this decision frames it, they're, you're being asked, "Does it seem feasible that these lots can be developed generally?" We don't want to create what they call poison.
Wait, you're, but you're going way over here. I'm just asking a specific question. Does the landscape management, um, plan review, site plan review, ensure that?
Yes.
So, we're not- we're not overstretching it, or we're not saying something we're not sure of? Okay. I mean, that's, I get what you're saying about the other things, but that's my specific question here. As I, it just was really a strong statement about that. Another one I had was, um, so a couple of pages further about the applicant's ability to successfully fund the proposed project. And I realized as I read it, it's, um, that I'd, it'd been kind of hard on this thing because having worked with developments, not done them, but being around people that have done them, and particularly with some of the resorts, I'm aware of how much some of these things cost. Sometimes the funding doesn't come through the right way, et cetera. I'm, it, you know, we saw, what we saw was kind of a prima facie case that here's what we think it'll cost. Here's the money in the bank that'll do it. This appears to be the company that's going to do it. I don't know if that meets the standard for a four-year proof or not. And I, so I guess it's on substantial evidence I find that it does, but I, it could, it could not work out that way. So, I just, I was, I got thinking about, well, why do we, why is the county putting that in there anyway? And, um, so just maybe some light on that. And then, the conclude, then I'm kind of bothered by a statement down below where they're talking about the RealVest bankruptcy, and there's a, I- I kind of agree what it's, what it says, but I'm not, there's a sentence, "Many real estate development companies sought bankruptcy protection during the recession," so that, and that was true. And a lot of them have come out of it. There's people that are building a lot of houses in central Oregon or developing property now that did face bankruptcy or, and, um, so, but just that whole part gives me some trouble because I don't, I don't know what we're really asked to validate.
This is a great question. Yeah, so, um, this is a provision that's specific to the planned unit development. I'm not aware of other places in code where, as part of a subdivision, that the applicant's required to make any sort of financial demonstration. You know, I've speculated, because we don't get a lot of these. You know, the planned unit development actually allows you to do multi-phase, multi-format developments. So, you could have something a little bit like Northwest Crossing in theory, if the underlying zoning allowed it. Typically, when you see these sorts of concerns about financial stability, there's always a concern that the developer will cut and run. You know, that they'll take the most profitable parts of the development, complete them, and then not complete the less profitable parts of it. And that's my assumption here, is this is a provision to ensure that, you know, where there are multi-phase developments, that they don't, um, they don't take the tasty bits and run away. In this case, I think that concern is significantly less, as we previously discussed, because it's a single-phase development, and there aren't differentiate parts that they might plat that are more profitable or less profitable. You know, there's, uh, because they'll be required to develop it all at once, there is not a chance that they'll provide part of the infrastructure or leave the development in some way fundamentally undeveloped. I think that this concern about their financial stability, if we were entering into a master plan agreement, for example, that can go for five years, and they said, "Hey, we're going to put off putting the park in until year five. We've got money. Trust us." I think that's a very careful question, right? Where there's a significant outlay, where they don't get a lot of profit out of it, and they're putting it at the end, I think a lot of diligence would be required there, and maybe even a bond to say, you know, "We need to ensure that you have the funds to do this last part of it, if we're going to let you do that last." Here, where there aren't multi-phases, I'm not sure what the, uh, what the, what the burden of proof is appropriate here. Certainly, you know, staff, we had a concern that there was some sort of reasonable accounting of what the cost would be and some indication of how they might pay for it. And I think that we have both of those, as you said, to a, certainly to a plausible degree, and that we have substantial evidence on it. I think that staff, the staff was initially concerned because this had, both before the 2014, the 2015 and 2019 hearings officers, been responded to, "We spent a lot of money."
Yeah.
You know, and that doesn't indicate that they have those funds going forward. And here, I think they've indicated it, and that a higher level of protection would be requi- I mean, you'd start moving towards bonding, where you'd say, "You need to post the funds to get this done." Because they won't be able to plat it without putting in the infrastructure. The expenditures, in order to create the lots, they'll need to engage in the expenditures or bond for them. So, I think, at least in the projects I've been involved with, that the chance that this thing, this provision is trying to prevent, which is the cut and run, I don't think there's an opportunity for that here. I think the check's going to be cut all, is going to be written all at once.
Well, and they've, they've shown that, I mean, they have expended a lot of money getting the property, and the goal or the reward is to be able to do this, to get paid for that, and, okay. So, um, I guess I'm all right with it. I just, the, it's, so it is a substantial evidence that they can do it. It's not a higher standard of evidence that, because we really don't know. I mean, I guess that's my point.
A quick follow-up on that. So, really, it's getting from the proposed land use to parceled approved lots, not building all houses on those lots, just getting to those lots, which gives you a finalized plat and with all these requirements in place. So, that's kind of the step we would be interested in, because if it was sold to another party and if a house was built in X amount of time, is kind of the next horizon.
That's correct. So, the, yeah, the financial horizon is the plating of the subdivision, and that these presumably would be typically developed by, you know, individual homeowners who would buy the lots. Or, you know, to the extent that the developer was developing those, those would come in through subsequent land use approvals. So, you're correct. The financial horizon is the recording of the final plat.
On the next page, number, on page 13, this is where the same sentence is there twice. So, if you go down to the third paragraph, "The record shows comprehensive preparing area management plan." Well, that sentence is essentially, and it talks about stringent and cohesive management strategies, is essentially the same sentence as the first sentence, two paragraphs further. If you look at all the words that are used, it's a little bit reconfigured, but it's like, it just seems like kind of overkill to have them in there twice. And, but it basically says the same thing. It uses the same words of stringent and cohesive management strategies. So, I guess my suggestion would be is take one of them out rather than repeat yourself about how great the project's going to be, but, um, and, do you kind of see what I mean there? I guess that, let's see if I have any more on the back. So, on page 16, um, there's a, on the finding about the size and width of the parcels, there's this, the final paragraph says, "The Board further finds there's no applicable approval criteria warranting, um, a rimrock survey." I don't really know that. I don't know. approval criteria warranting a rimrock survey." I don't really know that. I don't know if there are, I mean, I can see why they'd want us to say that, but I don't remember us talking about whether there's a requirement. I, I mean, I'd kind of like to see if there's rimrock, because rimrock does make it distinctive development, and what it's become is a mine with, you know, whatever you call that, that was pushed over, and, so, that seems like something, somebody, proponents probably wanted us to hold as a finding, but I'm not sure that we found it or have a basis to find it. Do you guys have any thoughts of that?
Also, the applicable approval criteria is for this land use decision, and then it's referring to the landscape management review will be more detailed review of each parcel. So I, you know, I do support the way it reads.
Do you think it's accurate, or?
I, so this goes a bit to, when I started monologuing previously, I was getting to this part of it.
You were ready to go.
I was ready to go on this one. So this one is, you know, there's a specific provision here, and I think of this as, again, a poison pill safety valve here, that, you know, to make sure you're not creating lots that can't be developed in some way. And so it's making sure that the size and width and orientation of the parcels is appropriate for the land division, and that the type of the development use contemplated. For example, you wouldn't want to create residential lots where you couldn't get septic or sewer. So it's, this is a big catch-all safety case. And you could imagine a scenario where they had laid out lots in the face of obvious rimrock that showed that you couldn't ultimately develop those lots. And the, you know, if, let's say that the lots were just solid rimrock, and there was no development location, you would deny it under this criterion, saying, no, these lots are not appropriately located, sized, and oriented, because they're on a pile of rimrock, and you're never going to get a house. On the subject property, the opponents argued that we really needed a property-specific rimrock survey to know the answer to this. The applicant, the applicant and the hearing, the applicant argued, and the hearings officer found persuasive, that there, you know, based on a visual observation, there's very little rimrock associated with the property, and that a specific survey to determine if even these lots are feasible isn't necessary, that these lots are of large area, and to, you know, the visual inspection of staff, the applicant, you know, there's no circumstance where anyone's pointed at a chunk of rock and said, that's going to preclude the development of this lot. As you saw during your site visit, there's very little facing rock out there, and it's-
There's very little.
Yeah.
Yes.
If there was a lot more of it, the staff would have been a strong advocate for this type of survey here, where there's almost none adjacent to the development sites, and the hearings officer found persuasive that a specific survey wasn't needed for you to find compliance with this criteria. And moreover, to the extent that there's, you know, that there's anything that got through the cracks, the LM review would catch that.
Landscape management plan would catch-
That's correct.
Yes. And the fact that the lots are, what is it, two acres, I believe, at a minimum, and you have to have 100 feet between your well and your septic, there's room on all the lots for implementing, you know, a single-family residence, so.
That's kind of the questions I had, so.
So there's a proposal to rework a sentence or remove a sentence. Was there anything other substantive change?
No, so I heard a proposal to, to strike the final paragraph, first, the first sentence of the final paragraph on page 13 of 24, beginning with evidence in the record, and concluding with monitor the ramp area.
So striking that sentence is?
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, and I guess I'm just commenting otherwise on the kind of strength of our decision versus, as it's written, versus how I felt about it, and this is kind of a product of, of one side writing it, and I guess if I was starting over, I might-
So you're saying-
Tone it down some. Yeah, the tone is, is better than I feel about this, that, in terms of, I, you know, I looked at more like, the hearings officer had decided within two points that the thing was approvable, the project was approvable. Those two points were dealt with, and then there's, you know, 20 pages of all the other stuff we're going through again. And it just seems, in ret, you know, in retrospect, I wish I maybe brought that up earlier. I don't know that we have to change it, we'll see what happens on appeal, but it does, I think the tone does affect somewhat what Luba, how they deal with a decision we make in terms of that local preference, right? I mean, so the tone is important, I guess, so, anyway. That's what, kind of my message, sorry.
No, I think it's an important message, because we did hear from the community, we did visit, and the fact that it was rezoned in 2008 to what, RR10, was really a significant decision that was made, what, 12 years ago? And so, you know, they have invested, what, $3 million in the community, and they have cleaned it up for the DEQ and other sources. So, you know, yes, maybe next time we should tone it down a bit, because it was, it was a very hard decision, but there were some factors, I think, that we, we couldn't change.
Commissioner, speaking to that issue, if I might, staff walks a fine line with these, in, in that the practice is to typically let the party that's prevailing prepare that initial draft, and staff does work with it, I know Adam and Will put some time in this, and try to have it as best capture what you folks want and the tone, and that's not always easy, but, you know, we, we do recognize typically that if this gets appealed, it'll be the, the prevailing party here that's going to be offending it at Luba. And so we give them a little bit of latitude there, I think, to, to beef up the findings, to assist them in that. But we do try, and maybe in this one, you know, we missed the mark a little bit, but we do make an effort to capture your general, you know, tone on how you want these things to read.
Well, I think, you know, one problem that happens is when we're doing deliberations, there's, you know, we have the whole matrix. There's so many issues we're, you kind of hit with in one day, that we're, one, we're trying to make the big decision on whether it's going forward, and then on the parts of that decision, and then it's a whole nother thing about how strongly do you feel that, or, I mean, like, the thing on the, for having the resources, why, that's really a complicated thing to prove, and so, yeah, so, but, yeah, and I'm not, no criticism of the staff, to me, it's just something to think about-
Yeah, no, I just wanted-
With these complicated decisions.
Emphasize, we do try.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe, we'll try to get the drafts to you a little sooner, to maybe, hopefully, get your feedback on whether we're capturing the, the real tone of what you want.
That would be good.
Well, and as I, I can see, as, as I read these, I always kind of really focus in on the last couple sentences of each kind of summary, you know, the board broadly concurs, or the board adopts by reference, you know, I mean, kind of the concluding statement in each one of those finding paragraphs, because there's body, body, and then that concluding statement. So I find myself focusing on that concluding statement to make sure it reads the way I, you know, I intended, and when it comes out, the sentences are eloquent sometimes, you know, because we're stumbling up here, saying words and trying to digest what we think we've heard, and if we were saying yes or no on something, but the sentences, those concluding sentences, I do appreciate that. So I'd never really thought about tone or enthusiasm for the decision. You know, there's different ways you could look at it.
Well, it was enthusiastic, yes.
Yeah, it was enthusiastic. So do we want to move approval of board signature as amended, or do we need, what, is our timeline such that we have to get this done today, or can we finish it Monday, or?
Checking with legal, if they approve it as amended, can I simply provide them with the copy as, as adjusted and have them sign, or do we need to return to?
No, if, if the motion here is to approve it without unidentified omission of that sentence, then you can run it through Sharon, and that would be just collecting signatures.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd move board signature document 2020 dash zero eight, zero lower bridge PUD decision as amended with the removal of the one sentence, and submit it to us for signature.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? No, Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Will. And thank you for taking us to the site. I think that is critical. So, thank you.
You're very welcome.
If anybody is here with us today and wants to speak on this issue, you need to fill out a blue form, so you can give your public testimony. Thank you. They're over here.
I want to read, just read the titles, if I understand.
Okay, we are now opening a public hearing. It is the consideration of board signature of order number 2020 dash 002, completing legalization procedures for a portion of Sizemore Road. Cody?
Thank you. Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. So, as the chair just stated, this morning we're having a public hearing in the matter of legalization of a portion of Sizemore Road. My presentation this morning, I'm going to provide some background information, first on the legalization process itself, some background and history on Sizemore Road, and a summary of the matter here regarding why we need to legalize this piece of road. I'm going to review some of the public comments we've received to date, just, just a brief summary of those, present the road department's findings and recommendations in this matter, and then I'm going to pass it back to the board to open the public hearing. And after public testimony's been given, I'm going to request that the, the chair close the public hearing and take up consideration of order 2020 dash 002. I think it's incorrectly showed right there as dash 020, but, so public road records are sometimes insufficient to substantiate the status or location of a public road. Examples of this could include that the statutory procedures to establish or acquire a road were not correctly followed. All or portions of the record are missing. We run into this fairly often here in Deschutes County, because of two, two contributing factors. One was the transfer of jurisdiction from Crook County to Deschutes County back in 1916. The other one was the county office fire, county offices fire of 1937, where many of the county deed records and other records were destroyed. Other examples include the surveys that create a road was defective, or the road alignment has been altered over the years. So, Oregon revised statutes in ORS 368 201 through 221 provide the procedure of legalization to clarify the record of the right-of-way boundaries of a road, and to establish a public road as a county road if any of the following conditions exist. First condition is if through omission or defect doubt exists as to the legal establishment or evidence of establishment of a public road. Two, if the location of the road cannot be accurately determined due to either numerous alterations of the road, a defective survey of the road or adjacent property, or loss or destruction of the original survey of the road. And three, if the road has traveled and used for 10 years or more, does not conform to the location of a road described in the county records. Legalization is a statutory process by which a county governing body can establish the disputed existence or uncertain location, or both, of a county road. And legalization transforms roads that may or may not be lawfully established county roads, due either to a defective establishment process or a mislocation, into roads that are conclusively and indisputably county roads. These are both excerpts from the opinion by Judge Schuman in the Shotkin Creek Ranch LLC versus Crook County case that the Oregon Court of Appeals heard in 2008. It's a, kind of a landmark case in regards to legalization, an excellent legal opinion that was written for it. It's also of note that this was a much more convoluted case than the matter I'm going to present to you today in regards to a legalization of a road. And despite that, the Oregon Court of Appeals upheld the county's decision in this matter. So, brief outline of the legalization procedure. First, the county governing body initiates the proceedings, which, which this board has done with resolution number 2019 dash 051. Adjacent or underlying property owners are notified of the proceedings. The as-traveled road is surveyed. The county road official prepares a report regarding the matter. A public hearing is held, such as we're doing today, and then the county governing body adopts an order to either complete or abandon the proceedings.
Question. Is, so, in the previous slide, the as-traveled road is surveyed, so is the center line, this will be maybe a feature, center line agreed upon, you know, like, this is the center of the-
Yeah, so generally, generally speaking, we're, we're surveying the as-constructed roadway, and from that survey, we're determining the center line of the as-constructed road, and that's going to become the center line in the legal description for the right-of-way that'll be described in the order for legalization.
And that's completed, kind of the stable process of, we all agree this is the center line of, of the roadway. This may come up later, that's just something that came to my mind. It's not disputed that the, the center line of the existing right-of-way?
It, it's not disputed where the center line of the actual traveled road itself is.
Thank you.
So if the county governing, governing body adopts an order of completion of legalization, the order serves as conclusive proof that the county road is established in its surveyed location. The legalization procedure has been completed at least 25 times in Deschutes County for various county roads. Legalization statutes are well-established and have been in place since 1859 upon adoption by the first Oregon legislature. And Oregon courts have repeatedly upheld Oregon County's authority to legalize roads according to state law in appellate cases. So the road department's currently, just wrapped up the design for the Sizemore Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The project includes improving the historic bridge's internal drainage system, repairing much of the, well, all of the distressed structural concrete on the bridge, replacement of the bridge's interior fill and road surface, and some, as well as some other minor work. The total project cost is estimated at $1.4 million. The Oregon Department of Transportation is contributing $1.2 million of the total project cost. In our funding agreement with ODOT, which is recorded as agreement number 2018 dash 057, it stipulates that the county shall acquire all necessary right-of-way for the project. So this means that we, we've secured the, the right-of-way, and we, we can certify that it's our right-of-way, that we have public record that this is our established right-of-way, that we're building the project in. The subject portion of Sizemore Road, which includes the bridge, was constructed in 1914 with public funds. It's been maintained for and used by the public since 1914. However, doubt exists regarding the legal establishment or evidence of establishment of the subject portion of Sizemore Road as a public road. So this is a aerial map of the, of the portion we're looking at. You'll see where the little star is, and the white balloon coming off that. That's where the Sizemore Road, or also known as the Bull Creek Bridge is, and that's where our project lies. The entire section of road here highlighted in yellow, roughly 1,400-foot length of road. So Sizemore Road was originally established in 1892 in Crook County. The original alignment was west of the present-day Sizemore Road alignment. In 1907 and 1908, several, a few other roads were, were established by Crook County in the area, including the JR Couch Road and the RH Bailey Road, which provided east-west routes between the Sizemore Road, which was also known at that time as the bend to Sisters Road. So these east-west routes provided connectivity over to the, the newly plotted townsite of Laidlaw, which is present-day Tumalo. Also, the, the George Wymer Road was established during this time, which was essentially a realignment of a portion of the Sizemore Road. Then in 1913 and 1914, the Tumalo Irrigation Project was delivered by the state of Oregon. And with that project, Sizemore Road was realigned to the east, over Tumalo Dam and Bull Springs Dam and Bridge, to make way for the proposed Tumalo Reservoir. Due to rock fissures, the reservoir was, unfortunately, wasn't able to hold the planned volume of water. So no records have been recovered indicating that a right-of-way for the realigned Sizemore Road was established by the state of Oregon with the Tumalo Irrigation Project. In 1914, Crook County began proceedings to establish the realigned road. The Deschutes County Road Department has recovered portions of the record of the Crook County proceedings, but much of the record is unavailable. The most recent available record was from November 4th, 1916, which was an order by the Crook County Court to pay damages to a Fred Moser in the amount of- in the amount of $100 and an Adam Cotsman in the amount of $50. Three days after this occurred, on November 7th, 1916, in the general election, voters approved the formation of Deschutes County from Crook County. And the governor proclaimed Deschutes County's official existence on December 13th of that year. The available record is silent regarding the continuation of these road proceedings by either Crook County or Deschutes County. So, the record for portions of the current Seismore Road alignment were subsequently clarified, first in 1926, with the establishment of the Tumalo Market Road, which was established with a 60-foot right-of-way that's shown in yellow on the map that's on the screen right now. In 1995, BLM granted the county a 60-foot right-of-way for the portion of Seismore Road that went over BLM-administered lands. That's shown in green on the screen here on the map. And then in 2004, there was a legalization that was done for the portion of Seismore Road south of what's now Tumalo Reservoir Road. Also, that was legalized with a 60-foot right-of-way. Still, though, the available record remains silent regarding establishment of the portion of Seismore Road that's shown in red there on the screen and subject to these proceedings. So, notice of these proceedings in the public hearing was issued on December 18th. The notice was posted to three locations on-site and was served to adjacent or underlying property owners. I should note that notice for a December 18th public hearing was distributed on November 14th. But due to a Scrivener's error on that notice and issues with service to one property owner, the hearing was rescheduled to today to provide a sufficient notice period. So, of the two property owners notified, the first one was the Hudson Family Trust. Total area of their property is approximately 101 acres. The area covered by the legalization is about 1.74 acres. In 1913, when the road was constructed, the property was owned by Frank and Olga Swisher. Important to note that in 1961, 1.14 acres for Seismore Road was removed from the taxable acreage from the property. Tax maps from circa 1979, which was the oldest map we could recover to present, have shown a scaled right-of-way width of 60 feet for that road across that property. The current owners of the property acquired it in 2007. The second property owner is Tumalo Irrigation District, who currently own their tax lot is approximately 755 acres. The area covered over that property by the legalization is approximately a third of an acre. In 1914, the property was owned by the state of Oregon. It was granted to TID by the state of Oregon by deed in 1988.
Question again. Previous slide.
This one?
Right before that. The scaled, present shows a scaled 60-foot right-of-way. What does that refer to? What is scaled?
So, the tax maps don't actually show a width. But if you were to scale it, for example, if you were to go into dial, dial, the property lines showing dial, shown in dial, or the assessor's tax maps where they're showing the property lines, if you were to measure that right-of-way width in dial, you would measure a 60-foot wide right-of-way.
Okay.
So, the right-of-way for Seismore Road is shown on the tax maps currently, has been since at least 1979, probably since 1961, when tax maps were first started in the state of Oregon.
Thank you.
But there's not an actual dimension shown on the tax map. Okay, so regarding compensation in legalization proceedings, ORS 368-211 states that a county governing body shall provide for compensation under this section to any person who has established a structure on real property if the structure encroaches on a road that is the subject of legalization proceedings. No structures encroach on the road, so there's no compensation warranted under the legalization statutes. And this is a good place to point out that the legalization procedure and process is intended to clarify the record of existing public roads. It's not intended to create new public roads. So, in regards to the road location survey, ORS 368-206-1A states, "If proceedings for legalization of a road are initiated under ORS 368-201, the county governing body shall cause the road to be surveyed to determine the location of the road and the width of the road according to, A) the laws governing the width of roads at the time the road was originally established, or B) if the original width of the road cannot be determined to the width for roads of the same class established by the standards under ORS 368.036." So, under case A, to the laws governing the width of roads at the time the road was originally established, valuable records for the road proceedings initiated by Crook County for the realigned portion of Seismore Road don't indicate a right-of-way width. The state law that was on the books at that time, General Laws of Oregon 1903, page 267, states that, stated that all county roads shall be 60 feet in width, unless the county court shall, upon the prayer of the petitioners for the same, determine on a different width, not less than 40 feet nor more than 80 feet in width. No available petition for the realigned, the realignment of Seismore Road is available to us. So, under this reading, it'd be 60 feet. Thing important to note that this was law in 1903, generally before automobiles were at least prevalent in Deschutes County. So, for the most part, we're talking about gravel roads of the same sort of Seismore Road that were, that were starting to snake their way throughout Deschutes County back in this era. And the entire state of Oregon, for that matter. So, under case B, to the width for roads of the same class established by the standards under ORS 368.036. So, ORS 368-036 states that county roads and work performed on county roads shall comply with specifications and standards, including standards for width adopted by the county governing body. Our county has adopted its own standards. They're codified in Deschutes County Code Title 17, Chapter 48. And Section 100 of that chapter in regards to minimum right-of-way width states that the minimum right-of-way width is 60 feet unless specified otherwise in Table A or in any right-of-way specification set forth for a particular zone in a zoning ordinance. This is a screen grab of Table A from DCC 1748. Seismore Road is classified as a local road, so it's a little tough to see on the screen there if I highlighted it. But for a local road, this shows our standard right-of-way width is 60 feet wide. So, this portion of Seismore Road lies in three different zones, lies in EFU, lies in floodplain zone, and it lies in open space and conservation zone. None of the ordinances for those zones have any unique road standards that would supersede Title 17, Chapter 48. So, under both case A and B in the legalization statute, the right-of-way width is 60 feet. I want to talk a little bit about why a 60-foot right-of-way would be required, because we've received a lot of comments on the record taking issue with this. So, I want to make sure I address that. So, let's talk about the basic definition of a road itself in statute, ORS 368-0016. Road means the entire right-of-way of any public or private way. So, right-of-way width includes not only the traveled portion of a road, but the pertinent land adjacent to the traveled road that contains road cut and fill slopes, road structures such as bridges, retaining walls, traffic control devices, signs, other safety features such as guardrails and barriers, drainage facilities such as ditches and culverts, effective roadside shoulders for pedestrian, equestrian use, sight distance, parking, other uses, and sufficient operational area for maintenance and operations of the road, such as snow removal, equipment staging and access, structure access. And then lastly, but not least important, is utilities. As under state law, we are required to provide a place for public utilities within our right-of-ways. So, this is an example from, from the subject portion of Seismore Road. So, in this picture right here, we're standing on the Seismore Road Bridge looking north at the north approach to the bridge. So, on this picture, you can see that the bridge width's only about 16 feet wide. When we get out to the end of the bridge, the rail and the curves on the bridge flare out to about 30 feet wide. Beyond that, on the actual road approach itself, we've got about a 20-foot-wide paved road. On one side, we have about a 12-foot-wide shoulder. Other side, about an 8-foot-wide shoulder. Beyond those, on the left side there, we've got a 3-foot-wide retaining wall. Other side, we've got about 8-foot width of cut slope. So, you can see there that the right-of-way's not just intended to contain the traveled portion of the roadway. There's various other improvements for the road that are pertinent to the road that need to be contained within a right-of-way. So, just from this picture right here, just from those, we've got about 51-foot width of improvements, excuse me, that would all need to be contained within our right-of-way. There's an additional consideration here. We have a structure that we need to be able to access, not just the top side of, but we need to be able to get to the bottom of it. We need to be able to get equipment down there to work on it. We need to be able to get a labor force down there. We need to be able to do whatever we need to do to operate, inspect, and maintain this bridge. So, we need additional room on either side of that bridge to be able to do that. Another example, this is just, this would be just north of the bridge. We're still looking north on Seismore Road. So, here, we've got about a 20-foot-wide traveled roadway. Beyond that, on either side, we've got about 6-foot-wide ditches. We've got about a 2-foot-wide cut slope on one side of the road there. Lots of other things we need to consider when we're looking at this. If a utility company comes in and tells us that by state law, they need to put a utility in, where are we going to have them put that? We're going to have them put it in the middle of the road where it's going to be at the most, cause the most impact and disturbance to the traveling public? We're going to have them put it over in the shoulder of the road. That's generally what we do. Again, we need a sufficient width here for general operation of the road. Winter operations, for example. If we're pushing big burns of snow, we need a place for those to go. We also want to make sure that we're not putting those on someone's private property, breaking their fence, breaking their own private property when we do that. So, just a few examples of why a 60-foot right-of-way is important. So, one last statute here. Notwithstanding ORS 368-036, a county governing body may legalize a road at any width that is less than the width of the road described in ORS 368-206. If the county governing body determines that, one, the legalization of the road at the lesser width is in the public interest, or two, an encroachment on the road may not be practically removed under ORS 368-211. So, current county code has memorialized that a 60-foot right-of-way is in the public interest and that no encroachments exist. So, a lesser width under ORS 368-221 is not warranted. In regard to public comments we've received, and we received public comments up through this morning, all the comments we've received, except for a few here in the last 24 hours or so, were made part of the record. I've got what's come in since then. I'll distribute to you when I'm done here. The most prevalent comments were from the Hudson Family Trust. In their comments, they've made an assertion that legalization of Seismore Road across their property would constitute a takings under the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution requiring compensation. As such, they request either abandonment of these legalization proceedings or damages for the proposed take of the portion of their property occupied by the existing roadbed, just compensation for the proposed additional take of the right-of-way outside of the roadbed, and compensation for the remnant portion of their property west of Seismore Road. Additionally, they're disputing whether legalization is in the public interest, whether a 60-foot right-of-way width is required, and even disputing the Oregon Legislature's authority to adopt legalization statutes. We've received some other comments from other citizens. Those comments generally align with the Hudson Family Trust comments. And they also include some assertions that legalization will negatively impact the Tumalo Winter Deer Range. Just a quick summary in response to those public comments. The subject portion of Seismore Road is presently a county road as the available record clearly demonstrates Crook County's intent to establish a county road between 1914 and 1916 and as Deschutes County has implicitly established the road as a county road through county-funded maintenance and improvement of the road since at least 1971. Another document I'm going to submit to you is the oldest record we have showing county maintenance of the road, which is one of our bridge inspection reports from 1971. Second, legalization of the portion of Seismore Road subject to these proceedings does not constitute a takings. No transfer of interest would occur with the completion of these legalization proceedings as the public's interest in Seismore Road is already firmly vested. As such, no compensation or damages are warranted. The legalization procedure, again, is prescribed by state law to clarify the record of existing public roads, not create new public roads. Third, a minimum 60-foot right-of-way width is necessary for continued and effective maintenance and operations of Seismore Road for reasons just described. And lastly here, ORS 368-201 to 221 clearly provide Deschutes County the statutory authority and procedure to legalize the subject portion of Seismore Road. Questions regarding the Oregon Legislature's authority to adopt the aforementioned legalization statutes is beyond the scope of these proceedings. So, with all that, road department has made the following findings. Seismore Road was established in Crook County in 1892, providing a north-south route between Bend and Sisters. Portion of the road was vacated, realigned, and established as the G.W. Wymer Road in 1908. The portion of the current alignment of Seismore Road subject to these proceedings was constructed by the state of Oregon and financed with public funds to realign, establish Crook County roads, those being the 1892 Seismore Road, the 1908 Wymer Road, and the 1907 Bailey Road in 1914. Through omission and or defect, doubt exists as to the legal establishment of the portion of Seismore Road subject to these proceedings, which is condition one in the legalization statute. The portion of Seismore Road subject to these proceedings as traveled and used by the public since 1914 does not conform to the location of the 1892 Seismore Road, the 1908 Wymer Road, or the 1907 Bailey Road, condition number three in the legalization statutes. Pursuant to ORS 368-206-1A, the subject portion of Seismore Road has been surveyed and the right-of-way width shall be 60 feet. No established structure exists within the subject portion of Seismore Road that qualifies for compensation under ORS 368-211. Legalization of the portion of Seismore Road subject to these proceedings is in the public interest to clarify the public record regarding continued public ingress and egress to provide for continued county road maintenance and to satisfy the terms of agreement number 2018-057. So, with those findings, road department recommends for Board of County Commissioners adoption of order number 2020-002, completing legalization of the subject portion of Seismore Road. By adopting this order, the Board of County Commissioners is accepting the department's report and its findings and determining that legalization is in the public interest. I want to close my presentation here by stating that the board is being asked to exercise an explicit statutory remedy in this matter to provide clarity to the record for continued public use, maintenance, and improvement of this portion of Seismore Road. And the road department is obligated to make this request on behalf of the public. So, at this time, I request that the board chair open the public hearing for the legalization of a portion of Seismore Road. And after public testimony has been given this morning, I would request that the board chair close the public hearing and that the board consider adoption of order number 2020-002, completing these proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
And I'm just going to pass.
Okay. I would like to now open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Peter Fulen, under. Could I go speak? We have, what, three minutes?
I may, three?
Yes, and I do have a copy of your letter. Thank you.
One of those and one of these.
Thank you for hearing, Ms. Testemony. I am Peter Fulen-Wider. It's pronounced full and wider, like you feel like after dinner. I've lived at 17665 Snow Creek Road for over a decade. And my wife and I frequently walk Seismore and are very familiar with it. I'm also secretary treasurer of the Friends of the Tumalo Wildlife Corridor, a registered 501(c)(3) organization recognized by the IRS and the state of Oregon. I'm not qualified to comment on the legal issues surrounding the proposed legalization of this stretch of road. I do, however, have some concerns regarding the stewardship of this area as it is a critical urban and rural interface. critical urban and rural interface. Our grassroots organization was formed in 2013 by people living close, living in and close to the Tumalo natural area, in response to widespread, excuse me, widespread violation of the regulations in spirit of the Upper Deschutes Resource Management Plan of 2007. And specifically, we had frequent shooting, automatic weapon fire, hazardous materials dumping, and rampant off-road vehicle use. Working under a cooperative management agreement with the BLM, we erected at our expense the three kiosks that greet visitors to the area with educational information, and we have been continually active in graffiti abatement, trash cleanup, and the closure of unauthorized trails and roads. We work with law enforcement agencies to facilitate their contact with persons who behave in dangerous and/or destructive ways, and we continue to work with the various public agencies to standardize regulations and educate the public. And we've seen good results from these efforts. We have been quite focused on the area immediately adjacent to the proposed legalization, as it has been a prime and inappropriate access point into the winter deer cooperative closure area, and despite continued and ongoing discussions with TID, BLM, ODFW, and Deschutes National Forest, we have been unable to move them to do the obvious thing, which is to gate Bull Flat Road. This road is not recognized as a road by any jurisdiction. And to give you an idea of the few moving parts here, consider the surface mining violations of TID that were censured by the county, the consistent violations of the winter deer cooperative closure, the use of Bull Flat Road by off-road vehicles, and the vulnerability of endangered species, and historic monuments in the immediate area, and of course, trash and waste. My concern is that by implementing the 60-foot easement, you will remove our ability to monitor and post educational material for the public, and will inadvertently increase these problems, and my request is that it is truly necessary that you really, I'm sorry, that you legalize the full 60-foot width, that the county and the Road Department in particular will be sensitive to the risks of human activity in this specific area, and work with us and the public to mitigate any issues that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for coming today.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming today. So is your concern that changing the status will change the use?
Changing the status will inhibit the ability of us to monitor and post information in there, and will potentially increase use. And forgive me, but we've been through a lot with the TID, surface mining, the loss of record controversy, their conjecture to buy the DSL property that's in there, and all of the obstacles that are associated right in that specific area. So when this came to my attention, I thought I needed to at least make a statement, you know, that would indicate our concern here, that by increasing that easement, we lose control of the ability to post and educate and do whatever. I think there's a barrier in place right now to help prohibit people from going through, and we've been trying for a long time to get that gate posted and been unable to, so that the winter deer refuge is, at least in this particular area, preserved as best we can.
And is it your organization that's posting these signs or?
Yes, we have a cooperative management agreement with the BLM, and with that agreement, we have been able to get approval to go ahead and close unauthorized roads and post the information as it is set forth in the Upper Deschutes Resource Management Plan. So, and that's at our expense and our labor to do that, because the BLM has not, how shall I say this, been able to get a travel plan and an implementation plan, you know, together for the Upper Deschutes Resource Management Plan as written today.
Do you post also on the Hudson property?
That's an open question. I actually don't know whether we have anything on your, yeah, we do. Okay. Yeah, we go all the way down, Sizemore Road, pretty much all the way down to where it turns into pavement. And I do encourage you to take a look at that area, just so you familiarize yourself with the beauty and the access to resources that's there, and how it is used for recreational purposes by the public, equestrian, hiking, biking, all that.
One more question, where's Bull Flat Road? You say you want a gate Bull Flat Road?
I wish we had that poster. Bull Flat Road is a road that spins off right at the top of where this 60-foot easement is proposed to go, and it goes in a northwest direction and then crosses the flat directly. And it is not a county road. It is not a BLM road. It's just one of those things that needs to go away.
Across BLM land, though?
Well, that, as part of our efforts, we have been helping the BLM to establish their ownership rights to a portion of that property that is currently titled to TID, and this is due to another screw, to another lack of appropriate record-keeping by Deschutes and Deschutes, I'm sorry, Crete County and Deschutes County, record-keeping during.
Tumalo Irrigation District and BLM land.
I'm sorry?
TID and BLM is where this road traverses.
Yes.
Thank you.
Those two, okay. Thank you, Peter, and I have ridden my horse there, and it is beautiful, so, thank you. Dr. Leslie Hudson?
Madam Chairman, may I ask that the attorney who is representing the trust start first? I have some very brief comments to answer, if I may.
Oh, sure. Stephanie Marshall?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I brought in another letter and some photographs. I gave a copy to the Recording Secretary, but I have individual copies and one for County Council. And thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to present testimony today. Given the short amount of time that we're offered here, I wanted to make a couple of comments. First, it's not the trespass position, nor has it ever been the trespass position, that the Oregon road legalization statutes are unconstitutional or should not be applied. Our argument has been that that's not the only method by which a road, property owner adjacent to or over which a road runs, may seek just compensation. So I really wanted to make that crystal clear, that we've not attacked or undermined or sought to allege that the Oregon Legislature didn't have authority to enact those statutes. The question would be whether by enacting those statutes, the Oregon Legislature was somehow able to take away protections afforded by the Oregon and federal constitutions, and we submit no. To briefly go through a couple of items, we do, again, request that the matter be continued for due consideration of the facts and law. This is a really important, special area. We had attempted to have a meeting with County Council to discuss this outside of these proceedings. It was originally scheduled and canceled, and then rescheduled, just attorney to attorney. We believe that a more productive meeting between the Road Department and the Trust would actually find a way for a win-win. Our arguments have to do with the extent of the right-of-way, the fact that the area has not been maintained or used by the public for 117 years over the entire 60-foot width. Again, there are photographs in there, as edited by Dr. Hudson, of the area and the surrounding property. Several comments were made in the staff report regarding essentially alleged concessions by the Trust regarding this area being a public road. One reference to ultralight had to do with property north of the Trust property, also an allegation about the allowance of vehicles to park on the side. Those were posted as private property, the signs were taken down and burned. They've been asserting their private property rights for years, and it's our assertion that there's no showing that can be made of prescriptive use. The Council, oh, I'm sorry, you guys, I'm out of time, but the Council doesn't have authority to determine just compensation, and they don't have authority to determine whether, and to what extent, there are prescriptive easement rights here. If I can continue for 20 seconds?
Propose that.
Okay, thank you. 15, I'll do my best. There, in the county's request for proposal, it acknowledged that it would need a temporary easement from the Trust in order to construct, do the bridgework project. Even the extent of a 60-foot right-of-way would not be sufficient to allow that access. So the allegation that we need full 60 feet to do the bridge project, they need more than that, and Dr. Hudson can address that in his testimony if you have any questions specifically about that, but that's also reflected in our photographs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hudson?
As for the record, I'm Leslie Hudson, I'm the, one of the trustees of the Hudson Family Trust, and if I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to approach the bench and bring you some testimony, which I will not read out, and hopefully will have sufficient time to be able to complete what I need to say. This process is not about me trying to make money. Indeed, my wife and I determined that if we were forced down a route that would actually in the end end up in the county having to pay us compensation, we would donate that to charity immediately, and that the process, which started as a conversation between ourselves and the Road Department, of which I have quite a long record, of one of which I've given you some evidence of, which I would like briefly to actually recount to you, I feel very ashamed of the process that's happened in the county, that's brought us to this point. It started with confusion through a posting of a piece of property that wasn't ours for the hearing last year, and that caused considerable confusion on the part of people who would have actually otherwise given evidence this morning. Unfortunately, Madam Chair, the next person that you have, Sarah Rush, has had to actually go to her work with Cascade Transitions, which is one of the youth organizations just proximate to here, so she won't be able to give evidence. Unfortunately, there was not sufficient time for her to reorganize her schedule. When originally it became clear, having offered a temporary right-of-way for the county to be able to do what it needed to do, I spoke directly with Cody and said that, in fact, we'd give that free, because we have an interest in having the bridge repaired, which is in fact what we said before the Historic Landmarks Commission, and indeed, I think they will need more than they actually have if they take a full 60-foot right-of-way, quite simply because the access road is actually 142 feet away from the face of the bridge, which is where really the appalling condition of the bridge means that they're going to do a lot of work from the ground. Even so, we will give that access point. I've worked with enough few of the chairs and also the commissioners in forum where you'll know I'm both reasoned and reasonable. This process has been terrible. I was told I couldn't talk directly to the county and had to have a lawyer. I actually got a lawyer, and you've just met, I think, an equally reasonable person, and was told we could actually have a meeting face-to-face, which seemed a very reasoned way as a step before this. That meeting was then withdrawn, and then, at an hour's notice to myself, the meeting was reinstated last Friday, and my counsel had to go along by herself, and I spoke to her on the phone immediately afterwards, and I thought she'd been beaten up by the process of being really treated in a way that was not good, but we have no recording of that process. I believe that it's actually very possible, with a meeting face-to-face with the decision-makers in this, from the county's point of view, and also the Trust, that we could actually find a way through which will allow us to do what's needed, which is to repair the bridge, but at the same time, the part of the road you're talking about is the major route for poachers to go onto Bull Flat and then into the Skyline Forest for poaching. These are the sort of people who basically also tend to drive over the edges of Sizemore Road and basically trash the whole area. That has been very much contained, and that's work which we've actually done personally on our piece of the road and paid for, but also with the Friends of the Tumalo Wildlife Corridor. These people are usually very law-abiding, once they realize they're crossing over property which basically belongs to a private citizen, but they're also a mix of the people who are the reason why you see an increasing number of gated residents in Bend. These are probably people who really need the force of local citizens to actually oversee the area, so they know that somebody's watching and caring. I do hope that we have the opportunity, before we actually get too far along this road, to give the Road Department the easement that it actually needs, and also to actually legalize the current 20-foot width of Sizemore Road, which has actually worked for the last 17 years. I see no case for going to a full 60-foot, and actually, your survey shows Tumalo Reservoir Road coming in at actually 20-feet right-of-way, but, you know, maybe that was another mistake as well. I'm, over time, and I do apologize, I thank you for your courtesy, and will be very willing to answer any questions.
Yes, interesting.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, Dr. Hudson.
After we finish the testimony, we'd be able to ask people additional questions, maybe?
I think so, of course, and I do need to ask for Sarah Rush. I noticed you mentioned she's not here, but I do have her, so, okay, all right, so she's not here?
Carol has a blue sheet.
Oh, you have a blue sheet, Carol?
Shall I make it directly?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Carol Macbeth?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carol Macbeth, and I'm a Staff Attorney for Central Oregon Land Watch. I wanted to briefly express concern on behalf of Land Watch about the decision here, under consideration that, according to your roads engineers' testimony, all roads in the county should be 60 feet unless the Commissioners, unless you decide that it should be 40 feet. We didn't hear him say anything that this particular road should be 60 feet. He just said roads should be wide so that they can be maintained and you can have equipment come in, except for the bridge. Maybe the bridge should be wide enough to, or there should be some easement given to allow road repairs to be made on the bridge without, you know, having any problem about the width. But I haven't heard any evidence that says it's in the public interest to make this road any wider than 40 feet. So whether it's legalized or not, it doesn't so much concern me as whether it has to be 60 feet. I don't, we, again, the decision between, for the Commissioners is solely whether this is in the public interest, and so what you need to decide is whether, because this is next to one of the most valuable winter range feeding areas in the entire county, we could produce as much evidence as you like about OWRD and ODFW having really strongly emphasized these 1,000 acres to the west of this road as one of the most important areas in the county for keeping these winter range animals, the winter range viable for the animals there. And we've also heard lots of evidence in a case about the TID reservoir there, about how there used to be tons of parties out there, and kids would go out, and, you know, they would have dangerous parties and illegal substances and that sort of thing, they would go on and on, and that was a real hangout, and that, so widening the road and making it more accessible, it just doesn't make any sense for many reasons. The public interest is to protect that as a winter range area, maybe that would be less of an intrusion on winter range on private lands. It's in the public interest to keep it narrow and as it is, because then there will be less people going out there just to hack around. We haven't heard anything, there isn't anything in these findings that I saw, perhaps I missed it, about why widening it to 60 feet is in the public interest. As I said, all of these comments are about it's good to have roads that are wide, but not all roads, because clearly, if the code provides for you to be able to decide that sometimes it should be narrower, then it must be in the public interest for them to sometimes be narrower, and we ask you to here decide that it should not be widened as much as possible. There's just no reason for it. It is not in the public interest to do so. And I would like you to hold, to request that you keep the record open so that we could provide you with more evidence about why this road should stay as it is. There's no reason, I mean, if the bridge needs to be repaired, that's fine, but this road is functioning exactly as it's intended, it's got, you know, it's perfectly suited to the amount of traffic it has, and I don't think that any major changes should be made to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Can I ask you a question, Carol?
Certainly.
So, I don't really understand how widening the right-of-way necessarily makes it less wildlife-friendly. I mean, when we drive around, one thing I think about a lot when I'm driving down the roads, and I look at a lot of stuff, but I don't really think about how wide the right-of-ways are usually. I just look at how wide's the pavement, or how wide's the dirt, and so, what changes when it goes from four, and I get the fact that 60's, you know, 50% bigger than 40, but what changes wildlife if, I mean, if it get, it seems like your thing about more people being attracted to the area really has to do with how well the road's maintained, which is really a 20-foot issue. It's not the sides that make a difference, so.
You're right, I don't think the wildlife are going to know, I can agree with that, that they won't know where the right-of-way is. It would be imposing more on private property on the other side of the road, though, wouldn't it, if you widen it? And the idea is that there are some times when 40-foot is preferable, where you are trying to minimize the footprint, and I think that this is one of them, but I can't agree more that. But I can't agree more that the wildlife don't know either way.
Yes, they don't know. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Veronica Hudson, would you like to come up?
So I am Dr. Veronica Hudson. I'm the other half of the Hudson Trust. And obviously, you're a little concerned as to why this 60-feet thing is an issue and would like to understand a bit more why it's important. What I would like to say goes back a little in history. When we first moved here, we were getting to know the area. I had somebody to help me with my irrigation, which was something new to me, watering cans were not going to do the fields. The gentleman who helped me observed to me one day that he had seen somebody outside our gate with a horse trailer sweeping the contents of their horse trailer out onto the roadway. And when he went to say to them, "You shouldn't be doing that," he's just said, "Oh, it's just a bit of county road, it doesn't matter." He pointed out to them that actually it was private property. And that's, I think, my biggest concern about all of this and the verges. It's all very well the county saying they need a 60-foot right-of-way, but if they get it, will they look after it in the same way that we have been doing, both my husband and myself as the trust, but also as the organization, the Friends of the Tamalo Wildlife Corridor? Because if it's no longer, if that 60-feet is taken, and we've no objection to the 20-foot road being taken, I mean, it's already been taken in effect, but those verges or those sides are important because we can say, "Actually, that's private property and you cannot dump your trash on it." The county does not have time to send people out to clear up and do all this side verge maintenance. There aren't any ditches, by the way, along the side of the road. And I'm also concerned that if you get that extra 60-feet and you think you can now start dumping snow on those verges, our fences are for sure going to get into trouble. At the moment, they don't. We look after those sides, and then you're going to be going through the fences, and we have livestock. So I have a number of concerns. We are very happy to look after the two sides of the road. We've been doing it since we moved here, and I don't think anybody's had any particular complaints about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public comments this morning? See, did you have some questions then?
Maybe Mr. Hudson, if we could ask, can I just ask you a question, follow-up question? Yeah. We didn't really hear, there's a portion of your property that's on the other side of the road, and we didn't really hear if that's a concern by making this a legalized road, that, is that affected, or is it not significant enough to be that affected, or what's your position on that?
So, you know, I think the information that you got, which was almost as big as a second edition of the Bible, I mean, it was incredible.
Thorough, yeah. Some of it is like reading, it's hard to read, too.
Well, because it was a copy of the failed reservoir, which, as you know, lasted for three weeks and really has nothing relevant to the issue at point here. But to answer your question directly, that piece of land will be isolated from the rest of our property, but it's again a piece of land which acts as a buffer to maintain the integrity of the verges. The difficulty is that that piece of property needs regular mowing, it needs regular tree limbing, it needs somebody to be around to actually collect the cigarettes that are thrown from the people coming off Bull Flats. It's definitely an area where camping is not allowed, and we've posted it to that effect off the road. You may picked up in the actual, I can't imagine you could have read of it all, let me just tell you. It was used at one point as a landing strip for ultra-light aircraft, which is actually forbidden by a state ordinance, which Cody Smith was very kind enough to actually point out to me. And so, for all sorts of reasons, to be able to say to somebody, just as my wife explained, "This is actually private property and not a public verge," the isolated 1.18 acres, I really hope we don't get pushed into the federal courts. It will be a terrible mess for us. It's an expense we don't want to have to take. It's an easement we want to give gratis. And the way it's been characterized in your folders, I mean, better would have been a discussion with the road department. I learned more this morning than I have during the last three months. So, you know, I think in the federal courts, of course, as you know, Justice Roberts himself wrote the piece of the opinion which actually identified the fact that either by enacting a statute or by a direct taking, you could diminish a landowner's property. And the Supreme Court said that that was a taking indirectly. And if we get forced into court, I mean, obviously, that would be a terrible outcome. I'm not looking for it, and I can't imagine the county is looking for it.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hudson. Did you have any more questions, Tony?
If, maybe if Stephanie Marshall could define the specific ask, I mean, because now he's a representative party and it is go across that specific land. You know, being a lawyer representing, I'm, this is interesting situation because legalization process shouldn't be this way, is my assumption. So can you, I mean, what's the specific ask? You know, let's not go too far on this, but what's the specific ask?
I think the specific ask was just made by Dr. Hudson, which is, and maybe I can elaborate, which is, let's slow down. We don't need to rush through this. I think that the commissioners have had some questions about whether this is truly in the public interest, and I think that Dr. Hudson, on behalf of the trust and the road department, can have those discussions. That did actually come up in my conversation with Adam Smith last week when it was just the two of us. But it seemed like lawyer to lawyer, Mr. Smith said that he hadn't even been out to the property, he wasn't familiar with the road system out there. So I think, yeah.
This is a right-of-way from more than 100 years ago. It was realigned for the reservoir. People drive it, people expect it to be there. I assume the road's not going away.
Right.
So what's the specific ask? To stay at 20 feet?
To stay at 20 feet.
And then, when Mr. Hudson's, legally, when Mr. Hudson says he offers the right-of-ways, it's temporary easement right-of-way for construction and maintenance of the bridge?
Well, I think that you'd have to ask Dr. Hudson as to the length of time, I mean, the...
So it's temporary, temporary?
It could be. The easement that goes through the BLM land is for a period of 30 years. That's only in place for another five years. So the road department's statement that the road is legalized north of the trust property is not a completely correct statement. So, again, these are discussions that could be made between the...
Do you have paperwork showing that BLM easement, then?
Well, I could get that for you, if it's not in the record. Again, over 300 pages, but yes, we do have paperwork.
It's in our...
Oh, it is, okay. Yes, yeah, and I hadn't seen that. Yeah, okay, thank you. That's all, the only question.
Okay.
So, to follow up on Commissioner Bone, is also one of the asks, it sounds like, is to have a discussion, some kind of negotiation of whether there's options, and that would be something you'd add, what we would consider, I guess?
Correct. Yes, and that's, that was, I believe, well, my first letter was 13 pages, single-spaced. This next one is only five pages, so we're trying to, you know, narrow it down a bit. But yes, I think that's been our consistent ask, which is basically for a receptive audience, not to get our way, but to really feel like both sides have heard the other. You know, Commissioner DeBone's question about, well, this road has been in this place for, you know, and it's 60 feet wide, there's some disagreement and the records are unclear, you know? And then we get into the talk of what's, you know, what amount has the public used? And again, the board doesn't have authority to say, "Well, we find a prescriptive easement for 60 feet has been used by the public." You know, that would be another forum, but again, we don't want to have to go there. We think that we can find a way that benefits both sides outside of the court system.
Madam Chair, maybe I, could I perhaps restate the ask, as Commissioner DeBone very characteristically has asked for, he's gone to the very heart of the matter.
Sure.
I have your permission. I think the road legalization is not open to doubt. The county has the right, the county has the center line, the county has a prescriptive right on a roadway 20 feet wide going into a bridge 14.5 feet wide. The county has a need to repair that bridge, and that bridge is our only means of escape in the event of a wildfire. I don't want to have a situation where we're actually left to burn because the bridge is down. Every bone in my body will actually urge the road department to take the temporary easement that they need to get to the face of the bridge. But at the same time, I would like, if possible, to have the right to continue to spend our own money to actually continue to maintain the verges on behalf of the county. If I don't have that right through ownership, what will happen is people will say to the relevant authorities that we have no right to do that. And so the whole process of maintenance and protection of the verges of the road in a very sensitive part and beautiful area will be lost.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Right. Cody, we have some questions for the road department? We do have some questions for the road department. The 60-foot, was that established in what, 1907? You know, when they said that every road in Oregon is 60 feet per the legislature? Was that from 1907?
The law I flash, I believe, that version of it had been enacted in 1903, but it was essentially based on a prior version that was from sometime in the late 1800s. I think it had been virtually unchanged, it had just been renumbered from the law prior to that.
Okay, the problem we're talking about here is the fact that we have the contract with, ODOT is doing the work, the 1 point, they're expending 1.2 million on the bridge, and we have to give, we have to produce clear title, is that what we're talking about?
We need to certify that we have a legal right to the right-of-way before we start spending both our own funds and the state's funds.
And the 1.2.
On the project, correct.
Okay. And by doing a road such as 40 feet, that is inadequate? I mean, I was, in our presentation, at one point you did say 40-foot was another option?
I don't believe I said that, no.
Okay, well, somewhere in, okay, I'll pull it out then. All right. Commissioner Hudson?
So, I'm interested, I wasn't aware of this 40-foot, or that some county roads are 40 feet, or, and so is there, do you have any history on that, or is that true?
We do have some roads out there that are, that were established with a 40-foot right-of-way. Prevalently, a majority of our roads, in all cases, local roads, arterial roads, collector roads, are all established within a 60-foot right-of-way. Because in particular, the majority of our collector and arterial road system that was established from Oregon statehood up through the Market Road Act, the State Market Road Act in the 30s, state law at the time was that right-of-ways would be 60 feet wide.
So where do the 40-foot right-of-ways come from? Were they, did they predate the 60-foot, or are they...
40-foot, historic law said that 40-foot could be a minimum right-of-way.
Right, that was the minimum.
Presently, presently, that's not in statute. What's in statute now is the counties, and it has been in statute for many decades now, is the counties will adopt their own standards. The standard we have adopted is 60 feet, except for in the case of arterial highways where it's 80 feet.
It seems like one of the problems here is we've, you've got a road that people probably thought was just kind of a offbeat road, used by people for various activities, but really wasn't the original intent, where it was the laid lot of Seismore Ranch, and that's not really what they do anymore. So there's just a change of what we're saying we'll do with it. What difference, though, do you, does the county road department exercise, or what will they, what's the plans to be, what will be different in this portion of the road than we're doing now as a county road?
I'm not sure I completely understand your question there.
Are you going to pave it, or are you going to put...
No, we have no plans of any improvements here. I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding here on several, the part of several involved parties here. In order for us to improve the road, there's two, this portion of the road at least, there's two things that would have to happen. First, we would have to adopt a project into the transportation system plan. Second, we would have to go through a conditional use permit for the portion of the road that's in the floodplain. The only project identified in our TSP for Seismore Road, the only project that we have on our docket right now is this, is this bridge rehab project. We're ready to get this thing out to bid. We can't do it until we can certify that we own the right-of-way and that our contractor will be working with on our property. Dr. Hudson brought up a statement earlier that even with a 60-foot right-of-way, we don't have enough property. That's incorrect. They're basing that on an excerpt from the ODOT scoping notes, prior to ODOT awarding us the money, they had ODOT, had a team of ODOT employees that scoped the project. This is just, you know, a group of ODOT employees who don't know our road system at all, haven't been here, went out, "Oh, here's what we think's needed for this project." That's how they come up with the funding amount that's in our agreement. What's that?
Airborne, we're talking about again?
Yeah.
And somewhere in there, and they state, in those scoping notes, an ODOT employee stated, "Oh, they're going to need these additional easements for access to the bridge." We don't need those easements. We've developed our plans to 100%. We're done. We know what we need. We just, we just need there to be a typical 60-foot right-of-way here for us to be able to access the bridge and deliver the project we need to deliver. If we needed something beyond that, we would have been approaching, in that case, it would have been TID, but we would have been approaching TID to secure that additional easement that we need.
Well, that's where you're saying that to do anything further on this section of road, you have to change the TSP, which we are actually looking at a review, or reviewing that now, so that's, I guess, could be considered, and then a conditional use because it's floodplain?
Just to clarify, yeah, yes, we are getting ready to update our TSP. We're not looking at plugging a project in for Seismore Road in the TSP presently. That, if that comes up through the process, then okay, but...
Do we do snow clearance there?
Yeah, this is a county-maintained road.
So we do take care of the snow there? Okay, all right, I just was wondering.
Was there any, you said there were some other things that we were incorrect or something? Do you want to clarify those now, or...
I would like to clarify, because Dr. Hudson made some assertions that I take exception to, that our contact with the Hudson Family Trust only started when we had sent a notice of these proceedings to them in November. That's incorrect. I've been talking to Dr. Hudson in good faith about what we intended to do here and what these proceedings would be for about a year now. He and I both serve on a advisory committee for the US 20 at Tamalo Project. I've had discussions with him at those meetings about, yep, project's coming up. We intend to go through the legalization proceedings to legalize the road here. In good faith, I've been contacting the Hudson Family Trust here. I provided in the record emails that demonstrate that. December 12th of last year, we received comments from Dr. Hudson that we constituted as a threat of litigation. As soon as we got that, we turned this over to our county council. So from there, the contact's been through our legal staff, but the characterization that we haven't been communicating with them well, or that we just refuse to communicate with them is not true.
May I say I have the highest regard for the road department, and actually Cody Smith, I think our interaction has been temporary, and the other piece of evidence which I handed in there was actually the interaction with, for example, the grader gentleman, Rod, who actually graved the road. You will see, he sent a letter, an email to Mike Berry, recognizing that when he'd finished the work, we'd put a box of chocolates overnight on his grader, the front of the grader, which he found the next day just to say thank you. I wrote into the road department... I wrote into the road department and actually was copied by, I think to Chris Doherty, but I'm sure he gets lots of those complimentary letters every week.
Every day.
I make no assertions against Cody whatsoever. He has behaved in an exemplary manner and has been extremely helpful. I only wish my experience from New Jersey Road Department was what it's been here, and I would like to talk directly to the road department. I think that's where, since the beginning of the legal part of the process, he came almost unilaterally determined that I was threatening a tort, or whatever the word would be. I think Cody and I have been unable to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hudson.
May.
Good words. So, oh, Cody, there was one duplication in the packet that I did find. There's just, um, two pages were duplicated in your packet.
Okay. Two pages and five hundred something.
I know, pretty good job. Anyway, there's just two that I found.
Okay, noted.
Okay, thank you. So, what do we do? So.
So you have a few options at this point. This is not a land use hearing, so the request to, um, hold the record open is a hundred percent discretionary on the chair's part, if you choose to do that. You could close the hearing, close the record, deliberate now. There's an order that's been presented that you could vote to approve that today and, and move forward at this point. If you so choose, uh, the board could certainly leave the record open, as was requested, for a limited period of time. It wouldn't be a seven, 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 it would just be a simple date certain, and anybody could submit anything by that point in time, and the board could review that, and then schedule this for your decision at a date subsequent to that.
Okay.
I, I just guess I would note that there is some level of, of urgency with regard to the building season and, and whatnot, and so, um, the sooner the better, I think, would be.
Cody, did you want to say something?
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. Uh, I, just, one thing I want to, I do want to make sure the board recognizes is, is Hudson Family Trust obviously represented here. However, there, there is another property owner involved in this matter, which is the Tumalo Irrigation District. And I just want to make sure the board recognizes and understands that, um, you know, what we're proposing here is a legalization across both of those properties. Negotiating with one property owner, or, you know, if that's what the board is considering, we have another property owner that, that's impacted in this matter, and I just want to make sure the board recognizes that and whatever they're, um, gonna consider here in this case.
How long does it stretch across TID?
The, the length of it, uh, roughly two hundred feet. But, but that includes the majority of the bridge, which is, which is really the, the matter at hand here, um, as far as the, um, the time restriction.
Given the time restrictions, I, I still think we should maybe leave the record open for a week or two, um, but also, we're gonna need some time to go through this one, you know, now that we've kind of heard the gist of the arguments, I feel like I need a time to really go through the packet one more time. I also think that in that time span, if there is a chance to meet and resolve things, that would be a good time to try to do that, so, I don't know if that's a possible thing, but.
So, I think we're, public hearing closed.
Yes, the public hearing is closed.
That was a proposal to leave the written record open just now?
Right.
So I do support closing the written and, um, public testimony at this point in time.
I actually, um, because Sarah just left, and I, if she has some comments, she, I feel like she should be able to, you know, email those in. Um, I, I would actually feel like keeping it open for, let's see, what's today, Wednesday? Till, what do you think, Friday? Is that enough time? Like, is people, five o'clock at Friday?
This Friday?
Yeah, or do you think a week's better?
I think a week's better.
Okay. As long as we're doing it, and maybe the parties can actually get together in this next week, if we keep the record open.
Well, we can talk about that with the county.
Yes, and, um, and I will go drive the road without my horse trailer.
So then, to be clear, the record, the public hearing has been closed, the record, written only, will be held open until five o'clock, a week from today, which I believe is the twenty-ninth, and, um, the board would then reconsider this, what, at that following Wednesday meeting, which is the fifth, I believe, of February?
It is the fifth of February.
And, um, would that comport with your timelines that you're working under if you get a, an order at that point in time?
It's not, I know it's not perfect.
If I get an order of completion at that time, yes.
So then, that means anybody could submit anything into the record up until five o'clock a week from today? The record would be, who's the depository of that? Would that be the road department? That would be to the road department, so if you're physically gonna do it, you need to be out there just before five next Wednesday. If you're gonna send it electronically, it would be to the attention of Cody Smith at the shoots.org, and, um, I think our servers on the county side aren't always time perfect, so might not want to wait till four fifty-nine next Wednesday to hit send, you might want to do it just a tad earlier to make sure it gets received over there by five o'clock. And then the board will plan, Sharon, can this be on their February fifth agenda? So it'll be on the agenda for February fifth, this room for the board to make a decision, ideally. So now, there's the matter of one party wanting to really sit down with the governing body and communicate. Yeah, I.
Or representatives of the somebody.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I would recommend a one-on-one with the governing body. If, if the governing body wants staff, road and legal to work with, uh, the Hudson Trust, we'd certainly be amenable to that direction if that's what you give to us.
We'll have a work session. Do we have a work session Monday? We can have an executive session at that point and discuss it.
We certainly could.
Next Monday?
Next Monday, your work session, sure.
Okay. Uh, okay, great.
So that's that.
Okay.
All right, so we have a plan? And.
Questions? Yeah, ask, see if there's any questions, everyone understand?
Does everyone understand, then? Um, you can still submit public record to Cody by next Wednesday at five PM. If it's color or longer than twenty pages, it would be, um, you have to bring it in. Don't submit it electronically, please. And then we'll actually have an executive session on it, um, next Monday, which is, which is, um, a session just between us, so we can go over all these documents that were submitted today, in addition to what we have in our five-hundred-page packet from Cody.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure this would necessarily qualify as an executive session at this point, it might just simply be part of your work session.
Okay.
The issue being that we will discuss the idea of having further discussions before we try to do it otherwise, I mean, which is what, one of the things you've asked. So, the department can do what they can do, and then we can work with the departments to also, um, suggest a course, and I guess that's what I think we would do, is talk with them about that, and so, to see.
So Commissioner, one of the possible outcomes, if we were able to talk correctly with the road department, is we may actually get an understanding of what their needs are and simply say, okay?
Well, it sounds like the, the discussions, I mean, I'm, I'm just seeing what, saying what it looks like to me, discussions directly with the road department, or with CDD, or whatever, may have stopped when we, the county got a notice of what looked like a tort claim, possibly. So, I guess that's what may have put a chill on things, but we're saying, can we, so I'm, we've talked about this a little bit as a commission, but we haven't really formally said, let's figure out how to get together. So that would be what I think we're gonna do on Monday. Is that what you?
Well, the testimony was federal court, you mentioned that a few times, so we've got to get clear on what we're doing here.
Right.
I must say, the county paid three hundred dollars instantly to the continuing attorney education, um, seminars that were held last December, and I actually attended with my counselor from the county.
I heard that.
And one major review was actually the Supreme Court decision last June about takings.
We heard that, we couldn't figure out why we'd spent the money to send you there, but...
It would be well spent.
It was well spent.
Because basically, I realized, oh my God, I'm going into this without an attorney, I better get something into the county. And actually, I wrote that myself. I didn't actually have the benefit of legal counsel, which is when, then, I said, well, you know, could I have some time, which is in your packet, for legal counsel and a discussion with the road department? There, there was no threat. You know me well enough, that is not my style.
Well, so Madam Chair.
Surfing with you on the Tumalo Project, yes, I would say that isn't your style, so.
So my thought for us as a commission, and, and if I may, is that, that we would discuss on Monday whether we want to have some informal discussions further before we get to the hearing or some, or resolution, also by hearing, so, that's what I was thinking we would do, but we need to, I think we need to talk to staff some about that, legal staff, road staff, et cetera. So that's, that's what I'm proposing, is that what you were thinking also?
Communicate, and Monday we'll sit down and talk.
Yes, I know. I mean, I realize that we do have, you know, the ODOT project hanging over our head, and when I first came on board and heard about Sizemore Bridge, and the fact that it was a hundred and, over a hundred years old, I was like, oh my gosh, we're finally fixing something that's historic, right? And I never dreamed that we'd be sitting here this morning, talking about a lot of Sizemore, so. Anyway, yes, you never know what you can wish for, right? So I, I do believe that's what we'll be doing Monday. And thank you, Cody, for all your historical presentation. It's, um, it's going back so, I mean, when you think about it, can you imagine going back that far and bringing up all the documentation that you did?
So then, this matter is done for now?
Yes.
And we're proceeding on?
We are.
And for those folks that have a blank stare and wondering why Dr. Hudson was sent to a class, he's also on the planning commission for the county, and he was there in that capacity.
We weren't building our own lawsuit.
Peter?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatazki, Deschutes County Planning Manager. For your consideration today is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty zero zero one pertaining to amendments that, uh, address equal terms pertaining to the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. The board conducted first reading on January eighth, and staff is respectfully asking your consideration to perform a second reading today.
And then it would be ready for adoption also?
Yes, there'd be an initial motion for, uh, second reading by title only, and then if, after that, there'd be a motion for adoption.
So we need two.
I'd move, um, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero one, Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act by title only.
And I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Yes?
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So I should read an ordinance? An ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title eighteen, Deschutes County Zoning Title nineteen, Ben Urban Zoning Ordinance, and Title twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Ensure Equal Treatment of Religious Institutions per the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of two thousand. Okay.
I'll move adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero one.
I'd second that.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
You're done?
I'm done, I don't have to read it again. Thank you very much, Peter. This is a very important, um, bringing Deschutes County up to, um, compliance with federal law regarding religious institutions, so, thank you for all your work. Okay, now we have Isabel.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Izzy Lou, Deschutes County Planning Division. Today is the day for the deliberations for the proposed marijuana production facility located at six zero one four eight Sterling Drive in Bend. The most public, most recent public hearing was conducted on December eleventh. Following the public hearing, uh, the open record period was left open for thirty days, which closed on January tenth at five PM. To assist the board with the deliberations, staff has created a decision matrix that outlines the key topics that were raised throughout this process. On the decision matrix, there are six issue items that are, um, under the green category that are topics that address approval criteria, and then there were two topics that were raised that were unique to this pending application. Um, unless the board wanted to dive right into deliberations or ask specific questions, um, I thought it would be best to just start from the top and go through these, um, approval criteria, or the topics that address the approval criteria.
That sounds like a good plan.
Okay, sounds good. So for the first issue item, um, it's in regards to the separation distance from a potential youth activity center. So the summary of comments and opposition. Owners, neighbors, and operator testified that Sundance Meadows Ranch is a youth activity center based on the amenities and activities available to the youth and frequency of youth visitors. Children ages four through eighteen participate in various activities that are held all year long. Special activities are scheduled, such as fishing derbies, Boy Scout Jamboree, and an annual Fourth of July event. The equine outreach horse rescue relies on ten to fifteen volunteers throughout, through the Oregon National Guard Youth Challenge Program, which is an alternative high school, um, and which is a weekly basis during the spring, summer, and fall months. A declaratory ruling for Sundance Meadows Ranch specifically listed non-conforming uses, um, that include youth activities. There is substantial evidence in the record regarding youth activities at Sundance Meadows Ranch, including on the website, and youth activity center should be clearly defined. In regards to the summary of comments and support, the applicant states that the presence of children on a property does not constitute a youth activity center. Youth activity center is not defined in the Deschutes County Code. Sundance Meadows Ranch is a recreational community that was originally proposed as a working cattle ranch that sells ownership shares similar to an RV park or a dude ranch. Approved uses include accessory recreational uses. The land use history for Sundance Meadows Ranch does not reference a youth activity center or any youth-specific activities. Organized youth-oriented use, organized youth-oriented uses would not have been permitted outright or conditionally under the current EFU zoning code. Youth activity centers are licensed organizations, such as the Boys and Girls Club, the minutes from the Marijuana Advisory Committee meetings on February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, and April seventh, twenty sixteen, support this claim. Boy Scout, Boy Scout Jamboree, or any other event would require county approval separate from the existing land use approval for Sundance Meadows Ranch, and the applicant refers to the wave seer luba remand. In regards to staff comments, uh, the Sundance Meadows Ranch declaratory ruling decision identified specific non-conforming uses like, uh, both parties have stated, um, and staff just mentions that the uses that were included in the declaratory ruling, some of those do have specific definitions in our code and, uh, didn't require a specific separation distance. Any uses and accessory uses beyond the identified non-conforming uses in the decision, uh, for the declaratory ruling may require additional land use approval. Any event permit, an event permit is required for events with less than five hundred attendees, an outdoor mass gathering permit would be required for events with more than five hundred attendees, and a text amendment to formally define youth activity center is, would be a legislative process. So for this first topic, first issue, the board would be determining whether or not the identified uses, activities on Sundance Meadows Ranch constitute a youth activity center, therefore, whether or not that would, uh, violate the separation distance requirement.
Yes.
So, uh, being involved with this process from the beginning, Marijuana Advisory Committee putting reasonable regulations in place, uh, having the Sundance, uh, Meadows Ranch being an EFU zone parcel with non-conforming uses, which are valid and legal, um, I do conclude that it's not a licensed facility, that a youth activity center would be a licensed facility for dropping off a youth, or a responsibility of other adults other than the parents. So I do come to the conclusion that, uh, you know, I, that does not... to the conclusion that, you know, that does not constitute a youth activity center. And that's just kind of the long view of being through this whole process.
I, of course, have a different opinion. There were over 250 signed horseback riding releases in our file and the new evidence where youth were riding the horses over the summer months. There were over 250 of them, because anyone under 21 has to list their age and when they're signed, when their parents are allowing them to ride. So you can see that's part of the issue. And the other thing that I think we as commissioners should be aware of is the fact that over two years ago, equine outreach relocated to 30 acres in the Sundance Meadows Ranch, and it's their only location. And we have a certified letter from the board member who said that they rely upon the Oregon National Guard Youth Program to assist with equine outreach. And this is an amazing program. It's an alternative high school serving all 36 counties in Oregon. It's a 22-week residential program, and the cameo kids came out in groups of 10 to 15 kids at a time. They're there, they're interacting, they're helping clean up. And apparently, per their, per the note from Terry Johnson, they're not heavily supervised, and they are expected to behave responsibly with the facility and with the horses. So this person was concerned with kids that are already at risk, that there's going to be, you know, the marijuana close to where the horse facilities are. Now, what I kept reading in the file was the fact of our amendments, when originally it was 1,000 feet from a school or a youth activity center to the actual location, and then we went up to, what, 1,300? And then those amendments were pulled back. So there seems to be enormous confusion over those text amendments that were then, you know, retreated. But it, you know, the fact that the horseshoe surrounds the pool, and all the activity that seems to be happening, period, the, all the pictures that we received from the Sundance Meadows program, and, and actually the community, the surrounding community, the Sundance. And it just seems like to me it is an activity center, and I know it's not defined properly.
So, you know, we've discussed this now on several different appeals of marijuana grow, production grows in the, in the county, and what the meaning of the youth activity center was. And I think it's, it's kind, conclusions come up that it's almost, seemed like even when Commissioner Banning was here and we were discussing at the end, two of you had been involved with creating it, that it was a mis, almost like it's a mistake to do it because there really aren't any boys and girls clubs in the county. So if that's the definition, there wouldn't be. But I, I think it was good that you did put it in if, if you, if, if it's valid to have it for daycare centers and schools, then other kind of large gatherings or, and I have some words I'm going to offer, but of youth would have the same protections from facilities as schools or, or daycare. So I think really, to me, and I know, we're going to, I don't know if we're going to talk much about the Wavesir decision, but obviously that was something that brought this back in front of us. There, they were saying that you, you couldn't tell in Wavesir that, you know, that, you know, how do you, how does somebody know if they're buying a property that there's a youth activity center next to it? And to me, in this case, it's one of the most clear examples of where you would have a youth activity center, if you, almost to the point of, if this isn't a way, youth activity center by the combination of horse activities, the equine outreach, the swimming pool that literally is in the middle of the horseshoe of, I mean, it's that close. If, I mean, the person that bought this property, the proponent, or applicant has had, had, I mean, just looked around, had a good knowledge that this might be a problem on this property, that they need to research it more. So I, I still find that it does qualify as a youth activity center, and I think we need to be thorough in our explanation to the Land Use Board of Appeals, if it gets appealed, as to why. So I, I really come up with words like the frequency of use, the regularity of use, the intensity of the use, the visibility of the use. I mean, if you drive out there and you see a swimming pool sitting there, and there's kids using it, it's visible. And maybe the history, that it didn't just start today, it's been going on for years, as this has. I mean, there's a, it's like some combination of those factors make it more likely than not that, that due diligence someone would find this, would, would see this facility. So, so that's why I come to the conclusion that it does, does invoke the, the 1,000-foot separation distance, and, and I'm fine with that. I, we may be told by some higher pay grade than ourselves that, that they don't agree, but from my perspective, this is a good example of what, what a youth activity center would be in multiple different ways.
So point of reference, rural property. I live on rural residential zone next to EFU parcel. The previous homeowners, we had a pool in the backyard, we had multiple generations of kids. This was the place for the families to go before we bought it. And then my wife and I got involved. We have 4H activities, we have horses, we have had, you know, generations of grade school, middle schoolers, and high schoolers go through, you know, bicycles and all kinds of stuff on our property. It's the same scenario. So getting a definition of what it means is the key to this. That's why I go the other way of clarity. With its EFU zone parcels and the rural land, growing a crop, you know, that's defined as, you know, crop by the state of Oregon, it's just kind of the black and white of it from my point of view.
And, and I know we have a difference of view of this, but I think that, to me, the difference is, is this just having your friends over to bike, ride horses or whatever? Or is it organized activities on a regular basis?
And that's why I say.
That's where I go to.
This is a timeshare ranch that has partial ownership. So it is having your friends owner in an ownership, uh, hence have your friends over in an ownership scenario. So when you get down to the legality of it, the Sundance Ranch.
Your property or?
No, I'm referring to the ranch at this point. It's partial ownership, and it's activities of families on EFU land. So that's why, you know, I do come back the other way.
But what about the equine outreach and bringing, they actually bring in students from the youth challenge?
They bring in 10 to 15 students at a time.
Yeah. So then you're in a situation where you have a land use approval, a building on the parcel next door, which is growing something that's legal. So it's like looking at a distillery or driving by a distillery, you know, referring to alcohol instead of marijuana. As I say, I, it just becomes kind of clear when you start to go down that path, which is the value for legality. I mean, how, yeah, just difference of opinion.
And I do agree with you that, but, but I think there's a little caveat that it is a farm crop that can be grown on farmland, which the county can regulate with reasonable regulations.
Which is the indoor, the smelling, the lights, the setbacks, those are the regulations.
But we have this separation distance from a school or a daycare. So why, why is this different?
Well, you just mentioned a school or a daycare licensed facility, separate than the, the, you know, amorphous concept of somebody wrote a disclaimer about horse activities or some kids cat off a bus and help pull weeds or whatever they do. So, yeah.
I guess I don't.
To me, this is a very organized youth activity because they're actually signing releases. You know, they're doing it as a, you know, keeping track exactly who's riding, the importance of their age, and, you know, there were definitely lots of children that have been participating, and this was, I believe, the year of 2018. So it was before, you know, they were, they were keeping the records.
Well, as I say, so for clarity of the record, is it when more than five people sign a horse release for activities? Or is it when there's a pool that more than 20 people can attend? Or, you know, I mean, it kind of needs to be written down for legality's purposes here, because this is what we're being asked to, for at the Land Use Board of Appeals, how, you know, we can't have a moving target. This is land use.
Adam, did you have something?
Yes, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. I, I just got up here to try and take some quick notes, to try and get a sense of where you're going and to maybe provide some context. I think following the Wavesir decision, clearly what is, broad strokes, I think what is needed at this point is a much more robust and clear interpretation of the youth activity center term. The appellant's in this case have, my understanding of their argument is that they proposed that the board enumerate or note to the factors that they're considering in deciding what rises to the level of a youth activity center. They went back through some of all of the, the board's past decisions where they've considered this and proposed a list of those factors in some of their written material. I, I would offer that maybe a useful exercise is to go through those factors as proposed by the appellant and for the board to provide staff direction that, yes, this is a factor that we are considering in deciding what is a youth activity center, or no, that's not really something that's under consideration. And if we then have a clear sense of what those factors are that the board is, is considering, we can take the first stab at writing a decision or working with the prevailing party to write a decision that, that really bolsters and encapsulates that interpretation of the term.
Where's the, where's the list of factors in the decision itself?
I don't have the same version of the record that you guys do, but it was in the appellant's written materials that I believe they provided during the public hearing.
So that's a notebook now. So do you know what?
I'm going to have to rely on my colleague to.
Exhibit?
To tell you what page in the book.
Um, so it's in the appellant rebuttal materials, and.
Well, I look at, that looks like it's 156.
Final argument?
Uh, the appellant rebuttal was dated January 3rd.
155.
Yes, so dated January 3rd, the appellant's rebuttal, and there's a chart, if you look on page. Page 11, although it might be numbered based on the binder. It's noted at the very top left corner that it's page 11. Starts with interpretation of youth activity center, and then there's some factors. There's a chart in the middle of the page.
Yep. Item number 155. Item number 155 about six or eight pages back. And it, on the top page, it says page 11.
Oh, there's a couple of page elevens.
And when, you're on 157.
Might have to get a copy of that, because I, for some reason, I don't see my 155.
Yeah, it's in the binder, because.
No, but for some reason, my 150s are gone. There's, I've got 157, and then I go to 134.
Separate building or area for use?
And before we, I think it's important, yeah, if we, I think we can certainly pause and get a quick printout for the commissioners of helpful.
Here's, I can share.
Just one page?
Right here.
So it should start with interpretation of youth activity center, and then you'll see a, a chart with the factors in the middle. We're all on the same page.
Okay, I can see this one. So we.
Okay.
We're fine.
And I would, and it's perhaps a bit of my own editorializing, but I would recommend as you're going through the list, that we think of, wow, or we at least keep in the back of the mind Luba's decision on Wavesir, that these things, that these factors. Perhaps a good way to, to work through the factors is to ensure that they are foreseeable. Each one of the factors, I think, a question to ask, is this something that would be foreseeable to an applicant? I think that would help at least ensure that we're staying compliant with the, the one decision we have from an appellate body on the youth activity center term.
Well, I think that's good, and that's, that's why I said that if there's anything that looks, is foreseeable, these, these activities, I mean, are that, I mean, that.
The swimming pool is in this, in the center of the horseshoe. Yes, it is right there.
And if you go through this list, so are we going to just go through it real quick? Or, I mean, one's present?
So separate building or area for use is present in this case. Youth recreation activity accommodated regularly.
Well, uh, well, so you're saying yes, the word yes, but, I mean, you're saying that this is documented decision by this body saying if there's a building or an area, we call that a youth activity center. That's one of the attributes?
Well, they're saying we need to look at this list and see if they're present, and I'm just saying they're present. I don't know if, I didn't come up with this list. I mean, I'm just saying somebody.
No, I'm just, I think that's, I'm thinking of kind of the, you know, the logic list of if this, then that, and if there's a building within 1,000 feet, you know, so then, yeah, I'm just getting clear on, yeah.
Yeah, well, so, yeah, this is a list that was, that, that somebody could say is a reasonable way to determine what a youth activity center is. You meet these tests, or you meet eight of 10 of them or something, and I, I don't know whether.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, if it's eight of 10 or something.
Because it doesn't have the, like, the one you had, which is licensing. Well, that's not on there, I don't think.
Permitter or licensed activities.
License, yes.
Oh, yeah. So it is. So it's one of the five, one of the 10.
If I may, I'm sorry if I confuse the issue. What I heard first, two of the commissioners clearly think that the, the activities in this particular case rise to the level of a youth activity center. What I'm trying to help the board do is to flush out why, to help put some criteria around the factors that you're considering to reach that determination, that we can then use this discussion to draft a decision that is creating a more robust and comprehensive interpretation of the youth activity center term.
So then maybe it's not my place to comment at this point. I'm just letting the other two know. I'm letting the other two know.
Well, you're just saying you don't think that's a good, I think, no, I think it is your place to comment as to whether or not you think that's a good basis for the definition of youth activity center. But I, one thing for us to say.
I agree with number five.
And, and then the other is, is that a reasonable deal? I mean, I.
Yeah, the question is, I think, both. Is it present in this case, but also, so it's not exactly as it's presented on this chart, but is it present in this case, but then also is it a worthwhile factor to consider when citing if a proposed use is a youth activity center?
Well, I think all.
For general consideration.
I think alternatives are present in this case. Is there one that's not? I mean, it's organized, it's school-related, because we have this school coming over, which is a very special school for at-risk kids. And the fact that they're on the grounds, you know.
What might not be is permitted or licensed activity, because I don't, I think that's being thrown up as this, almost like a, well, I don't like that standard is because it's kind of like, oh, if somebody licenses it, that, that lay, that raises to a, a more significant, more appropriate, more whatever youth activity. And to me, it isn't. I mean, if it's a, it has more to do with me, to me with frequency, intensity of use, visibility than it does just licensing. And we're using another government agency to validate this being a youth activity, is all I'm saying.
Well, I, I think you could extrapolate to say the equine outreach is permitted there, and then what they've gone is, they've gone and brought in these at-risk youth. And so it has, you know, that relationship is a permitted or licensed. Because they're not going to be there unless they have the permission of equine outreach.
A few things, if I may. First, part of what I think we're struggling with is, at least in writing code, the difference between a factor and an element. When we're writing elements, each and every one of those elements needs to be met. So it's, it's this and that, and this and that before something rises to that level. I think what's been proposed is more of a factor consideration, where you don't need to hit everything that's on the list, and there could be even one thing on the list that is of some, it's a significant magnitude to overcome all of the others. But I think, is there anything on this list that is not germane to the commissioner's decision in what rises to a youth activity center? Is there anything we should cross off the list? And I'm talking more broadly, just in interpreting the term, less as it applies to this particular case, but more in just what constitutes a youth activity center to the commissioners? Is there anything on this list that is irrelevant?
Will they add up? I mean, they all add up, I don't know. You're kind of asking when you say an element, like with law, there's so many elements to a definition of mens rea. So what you're saying is, are they all equal in a way, or are they all relevant in some way?
I was just gonna ask first if there's anything on the list that is not relevant to your consideration of what is a youth activity center, and then I was gonna ask, is there anything also that you're looking for that's not on the list?
Well, I don't, to me, number 10 is a little bit skewed, center open to public. It could be open to just certain, you know, groups, like the equine outreach, if it was open to the school, kids from youth challenge, maybe it's not open to everybody to go do that activity. So I don't know if it has to be open to the public to make it a youth activity center. Because a daycare, is that open to the public? No, it's open to the people that-
The pay.
Have their children there, or the children. So I guess that's one that I would question.
Okay, Commissioner, do we, we should take that, the, and open to the public off the list?
We could.
Or maybe it's an open to the public or designated groups, I mean, I'm saying sometimes it would be less than, but it can't just, again, it's not like, I just go back to that, it's not just you and your friends. I mean, that's, that doesn't quite make it to me, it's open to some other, does that make sense?
Well, it does, I think that, I was trying to, you know, think about like a daycare center. Okay, so you, you sign up, you take your child there, but you have to pay. Okay, and it's probably, most of them probably are open to the public, but a youth activity center, I don't, I don't think it would have to be open to the public.
Are we helping? Uh, yes, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing not agreement that it needs to be open to the public for something to rise to the level of a youth activity center. Okay. So that leaves us, I believe, a list of nine factors that the board considers in deciding whether or not something rises to the level of a youth activity center.
What about number four, specific toys, games, or equipment, I mean, that's kind of-
Well, horses.
Yeah, but-
And they play golf, and they do the golf, and-
So then are we gonna list specific? You know, when there's horses, it's a youth activity center, when there's, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, that could, yeah, how are we gonna define that list? I guess is what I'm referring to.
See, to me, that just becomes a factor, not an element. So going back to your theory that there's, I don't think you necessarily have to have specific toys or equipment to make it, but if you do, it adds to it, to me.
I don't think anybody's proposing a list of elements, each one of which needs to be satisfied for something to rise to the level of youth activity center. Instead, what I'm hearing from the board in this case is that these are all the different factors that we consider. You don't have to hit all of them, but these are all the different things that we are looking for to try and suss out what is a youth activity center. So if, if something did have specific toys, games, or equipment available for an activity, it would be more likely to be a youth activity center. But you don't need specific toys, games, or equipment available to become a youth activity center.
So Adam, let's say there were tennis courts, not a swimming pool, but there were tennis courts in the middle, and OSU was doing a program in the summer for kids, you know, with their, with their sports people coming over from Corvallis or something. That could be, you know, a total youth activity center, could it not? Would you know it, but all summer long, there's all these groups of kids that are hitting tennis balls? You know, just looking at it from a different sport perspective.
Well, Commissioner, I would, I think that's a great example that we can use to kind of test the factors and make sure it's, the test is working in your mind. I mean, separate building or area for the use, yes, there would be separate tennis courts. Youth recreation activity accommodated regularly, yes. It sounds like in this hypothetical that there's a, you know, org- set of activities that are going on a certain period of time. Adult supervision provided, I think with your scenario was OSU Cascades, college-age students teaching youth, so I think that would qualify for adult supervision. Specific toys, games, or equipment available for the activity, certainly tennis equipment. Permitted or licensed activity, probably not, but maybe depending on where it was taken care or where it was occurring. Organized group activities, yes. School-related activities, depends on how the program is structured. Usage exceeds usual EFU use by 50% or more, don't think that would apply to this particular set of circumstances. And use observable from neighboring properties, again, I think that would be fact-dependent on the location of the tennis courts.
Right.
So if, if, lots of yeses in that list, you don't have to hit every one of them in a kind of factor analysis to rise to the level of a youth activity center. So Commissioner, I put it back to you, does that, does that test encapsulate all of the things that you are considering when you are presented with an application and asked to decide if it's a youth activity center? If so, then I think this, these factors are, we're getting there, it's helping.
No, def- I mean, definitely, I, you know, when I was looking at the documents again from this particular application, and if this isn't a youth activity center, I can't imagine there is, what, what could, what, you know, they, to me, perfectly qualify as a youth activity center, and how we strengthen our decision is so critical. But we, we, I just feel like we have to acknowledge what they do for youth, and it's coming from not only Sundance Meadows, but it's coming from the equine outreach and bringing those kids in, and so that just gave it, because it started, she said, two years ago with the equine, so I just feel like it's a very solid, this is youth activity. And, okay, so maybe number 10 isn't necessary, you know, it's an option, but it's not, to me, necessary to have it as a youth activity center.
So if, Commissioners, you'll bear with me, I have two more kind of steps to go through, and again, this is just trying to make sure that we have the adequate feedback to really prepare the first draft of decision, especially in the comprehensive timeframe. I believe what I heard earlier is at least two commissioners think that of the nine factors you've settled on, all nine were present in this particular case.
I'm a little bit unsure about permitted, if that referring to permitted by some government agency that is taking a stab, or we're just saying those people permit this here, so that if it, I don't know that it has to be permitted by a government, I just don't like relying on government, some government agency to permit it to give this validation, because lots of things happen that the government's not permitting, so in terms of actively permitting, they may be allowing, but they-
Well, the Sundance was, though, permitted for decades, you know, by this, by the county. So can you extrapolate out to that?
They did recently go through a declaratory ruling process to, I believe it was a declaratory ruling, to confirm the, their non-conforming use status that had developed over these decades.
So that's the permit we're talking about?
Well, they're, they certainly listed a number of the activities that are occurring on-site in that decision. Or at least the county's decision certainly lists a number of those activities on-site. I mean, it's mentioning the RC track, it's mentioning the mini golf, it's mentioning the pool, the tennis courts, it's mentioning in that decision, all of those things.
I think Sundance Meadows Ranch includes uses that are permitted outright as well, so EFU farm uses, I think what the equine outreach horse rescue would fall under is farm use, and not necessarily a separate use, like a school use, for example, which may not be allowed.
Okay, thank you, Lucy.
And then last, to prod a little bit more, I think it would be helpful if there was a little bit more of a conversation on which of these factors, which of these aspects of this particular application the board found were foreseeable, something that would put an applicant on notice that these, this youth activity center was occurring in a neighboring property owner. Perfect example, we just discussed the permit itself from, do you know the year off the top of your head?
2017, 2017, so a very recent decision from the county that was talking about and discussing a lot of these activities that were going on-site.
As I recall in the record, the applicant also put in the, as part of their submittal, submitted a copy of Sundance Ranch's website, and that website lists all of those, or similar list of activities, I think it even characterizes those activities as a youth center on that website. The fact that it was on a public, presumably a public website, at least the applicant was able to find it, perhaps increases the foreseeability.
Well, that could become the 10th factor is, you know, marketing of, of, you know, if you're marketing it, that creates foreseeability, so. Yeah, so what about that, it's, it's, I kind of struggle with the one where it says about use is observable, I agree with that, but foreseeable, you know, marketing it would be a good part of that, so maybe that's a 10th factor if we don't do open to the public is nature of marketing or something, or-
So the logic is, somebody's doing something on their property which is gonna disallow a farm crop on an EFU parcel next door. I mean, that, that's another way to look at what we just concluded here, so I'm, that's why I have a hard time with this.
One particular farm crop that's, the state has allowed us to regulate differently.
I'm just saying, there's, there's wording, the way you could, this could be worded, it sounds very different. I made a website that says I'm gonna offer horse rides for people, and that means I'm gonna stop my neighbor from doing a farm crop. Yeah, you know, there's, it's just, I don't like going down that path.
You mean, as a strategy, people are gonna-
I just, yeah.
But if they aren't actually doing horse rides, or it's not, it doesn't meet all those other parts, then maybe it wouldn't be-
I'm just providing the complimentary concept here.
So certainly the land use decision would have been discoverable in this case, it's a matter of public record, it can be found. Marketing, they've certainly marketed and advertised on their website some of these activities that are, are going on. I don't, I can't recall if there's any testimony in the record that some of these events that were occurring or uses are visual from neighboring property owners.
Not that I can recall.
So I'm not sure that would necessarily be something that is applicable from the foreseeability kind of-
Well, it's-
It's right, it's like, it's not very far at all from the property. You'd see, right, it's a designated, it's your first, first item of public buildings for that use, it's right there. If you were on the-
And there's tennis courts there as well.
Yeah, and there are tennis courts.
I, I'm just-
And there's barns.
I don't recall evidence in the record saying that it is visible, visible from a neighboring property. It may be or it may not, I'm not recalling evidence that says it is, and I'm, I'm not an expert in the record, so.
Well, yeah.
Are you talking about neighboring property, referring to Sundance, or, or are you talk-
No, going back to, so the waves to your decision, so if an applicant is looking to, to apply, to purchase a piece of property and apply for a land use permit so they can produce marijuana on that property, what are all the elements, what are all the, the things that allow that applicant to know that there is a neighboring youth activity center going on? And in this particular case, I think the foreseeability, certainly the land use decision, and certainly as Commissioner Henderson noted, there's some marketing of these youth, youth activities going on-site. I'm just thinking through, what are the other things that an applicant can do? Can they go and put boots on the ground?
Is there a social media presence?
Visit the property and see something occurring next door.
Adam, what about a social media presence?
Yeah.
You know, are they on Facebook?
I think that kind of leads into the marketing.
I know, it's marketing, just further defining it.
Well, my assumption is that there is a physical aspect to the foreseeability, which is that if you're buying a piece of property, you would go to the piece of property and, you know, see what's around it. I mean, you know that if you're gonna, you know, do a marijuana grow in Deschutes County, you can't be within a thousand feet of a school, a daycare. Well, daycares are hard to find, I mean, they're not the same as schools, but you'd think you'd go to the property and look at, you know, drive the boundaries and see what's there, I mean, oh, that looks, there's tennis court, swimming pool, 100 yards away, I mean, they're right there. I mean, it's, they're not tucked away somewhere, and then there's all, I would assume that some of the other things that we're talking about go on pretty visi-, you know, visibly, the horse riding part.
My assessment of wave series decision and kind of the way I've tried to understand it is, I think Commissioner Henderson, very similar to your comments, kind of following a due diligence when purchasing property kind of point of view, what are the elements that put somebody on actual notice versus constructive notice, especially in buying a commercial property, what are, what are the, the standards in the industry in terms of what somebody should be, should be expected to do before they purchase a, a commercial property especially? And I think that's very similar to some of those things that you just listed out, I mean, of course, doing a permit search of neighboring property owners, of course, putting boots on the ground and going out to the property, visually observing what is around and what is occurring. All of those things can put somebody on notice, so to speak, that a youth activity center is occurring nearby. And it sounds like the board has certainly assessed that some of those things occurred in this case, or could have occurred in this case. I mean, the applicant by his own submittals found Sundance's webpage, so clearly, they've, they've found the webpage that listed this as a youth center and lists out all of these different activities. They found the decision, they put in their final argument a copy of the decision from 2017, so those, those things were discoverable in this case. And we can write findings that note that if they were in fact discoverable by the applicant in this case, that's a strong indication that they were foreseeable to address Luba's concern in the wave series decision. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, sorry for really poking and prodding, but as you know, this has been an ongoing-
This is critical, and we, we want to do it the very best we possibly can, so I appreciate the depth which, which these questions, the factors are. Handled, so thank you, Adam. So now, we keep going on to number two?
Yep. So-
I'm gonna have to leave in about five minutes, just to let you know, so I may end up leaving before we're concluded here.
Issue item number two was in regards to the screening and fencing, so summary of comments and opposition. Screening and fencing are insufficient to block view of the proposed grow operation. In regards to the summary of comments and support, the proposed marijuana production, production facility will be established within a fully enclosed rigid structure, and the applicant states that the proposed structure will not be visible from the road or nearby residences due to the existing vegetation and topography of the property. In terms of staff's clarification, the screening and fencing code provisions state that screening is required for greenhouses, hoop houses, similar non-rigid structures, and land areas used for marijuana production and processing. The applicant is proposing to establish a marijuana production facility within a fully enclosed rigid structure, and because the applicant proposed additional fencing, staff has conditioned the fencing design standards for new fencing and the retention of existing vegetative screening, but found that additional screening and fencing wouldn't necessary, wouldn't be necessary. And I also just want to note, it's not located in the landscape management where we've had those discussions in the past of specific colors and types of fencing. So in regards to this issue item, board decision point, is the screening standards, are the screening standards of this code provision applicable to the proposal? If no, continue deciding other criteria, if yes, either condition approval to achieve compliance, deny the application based on the, the screening, or deny the application, continue deciding other criteria. But again, I note that they've proposed additional screening from that northern property boundary where the little horseshoe area is, and we can impose additional conditions if necessary.
Well, and this one isn't the, the key issue is what kind of building's getting built, because if it's a, you know, fully enclosed- built, because if it's a, you know, fully enclosed rigid structure, you, there's no requirement of screening, it's only if they're hoop houses and.
Right, exactly, and they're not proposing, I mean, it's a processing use, so there's no parking standards, that sort of thing that would be, I guess, considered land areas, not proposing any sort of outside storage. So in this case, based on the reading of the, the code, it sounds like it's not necessary, but in terms of this point here, the staff's decision included additional conditions related to this provision because they proposed additional find, or additional fencing, and that's something we can incorporate into the, the board decision as well.
Okay.
I would say no, it's not applicable here, given the nature of the structure that's proposed.
So no.
And I agree.
Okay.
Issue three is in regards to the odor control method, so summary of comments and opposition, the submitted odor control report is not compliant with the applicable code section. The proposed carbon filtration system is unreliable because there's no way for the operator to know when the carbon filter is saturated unless odors are detected. Summary of comments and support, the applicant submitted a site-specific odor and noise report dated December third, two thousand eighteen, prepared by Coldbright Engineering. The report provides the type of technology and materials used, case studies, examples from other jurisdictions, volume calculations, maintenance plan, benefits, recommended best practice, and a detailed description of the carbon filtration. The applicant submitted contingency measures in the event the odor control plan fails, testing protocols and intervals, and identified the responsible parties tasked with implementing each aspect of the odor control plan. I just want to point out, that was part of the new text amendment for those additional information in the report. And in regards to my comments, an alternative report was not submitted to refute the one that was submitted. So board decision point, will the proposed odor control system comply with the applicable code? If yes, continue the reviewing the application, if no, condition approval to achieve compliance, deny application, no further action is necessary, or deny the application and continue deciding other criteria.
I do support that it, the code has been met.
I would agree with that.
And the carbon system is one we've approved and other proposals, and this seems to have as much evidence and background on that as we've seen before, really. So I, I would think we, they did, they will comply, I mean, the proof really is whether or not they act, the real ordinance is this, we get a certain amount upfront to get the, under the way that's worded, they have to give us enough proof, a report demonstrating, so that qualifies for me, and then the proof will be that they actually do control their odor, so, but, so I think it does comply.
So I do apologize, I'm going to step out now, I'm going to join the City Council of Bend, ODOT representative, their planning commission representative, transportation system plan is the big project, and this is a steering committee meeting, which I'm part of because of the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, so I'll be in a meeting the rest of the day also. Have a good day.
Have a good day. Goodbye, Commissioner DeBong.
Okay, so, topic issue number four is in regards to noise. Summary of comments and opposition, the submitted noise control report is not compliant with the applicable code section. The noise report is unreliable because there was no onsite testing, no building test, and the mechanical equipment has not been tested. The virtual noise model provided numeric findings without grounds or reliable methodology. Summary of comments and support, applicant submitted the site-specific odor and noise report prepared by Coldbright Engineering. Report includes a virtual noise model that demonstrates that the operation will not generate any noise that exceeds forty-five decibels from ten PM to seven AM. Any noise generated by the HVAC system would be intermittent and not sustained. The applicant submitted contingency measures in the event the noise control plan fails, testing protocols and intervals, and identified the responsible parties tasked with implementing each aspect of the noise control plan. And again, no alternative engineer's report was submitted into the record that refutes the one that was submitted. So board decision point, has the applicant demonstrated compliance with the applicable code? If yes, continue reviewing, if no, condition the approval, deny the application, no further action is necessary, or deny the application and continue deciding other criteria.
Does he have a question?
Sure.
The noise, the forty-five decibels, isn't that supposed to be the maximum noise during the day?
It's between ten PM and seven.
You mean at night?
Yeah.
When you're sleeping, that's the maximum, noise can't go over that.
That's correct.
But during the day, it can be as loud as they want?
There isn't any specific language in the, this specific section about daytime noise, and I believe the noise ordinance, I think it's all specific to nighttime noise.
Really? Okay.
So as I've, as I've kind of said in other ones where we've had this kind of analysis, it's, you know, we're just left at the mercy of the person doing the report as being a noise engineer, having software that's accurate. We don't really have a way to counter that with our, our own layperson's background. I do, you know, we have had a couple where they had thirty or forty HVAC units, it just didn't sound reasonable. This one, I guess they're doing three, it says they're doing three mini-split air conditioners, which, you know.
That's correct.
I'm familiar with those, so it's conceivable to me that they could stay under forty-five, but beyond that, it's really hard to, to judge it without somebody else saying why.
So that's correct, three units, but only one unit will be operating until two AM, so after ten PM.
And why is that, that only one will be op, what was the, I?
It doesn't say any, I mean, I'm not quite sure in terms of the reasoning, but that's what they stated was necessary for keeping the, the building cool, I suppose.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. I just think that's kind of speculative to me, that.
It's hard to know, isn't it?
Whether they'll really run it that way or not. This is, to me, one of the, they're weaker proofs, just because it's, but we don't really have countering, was there countering stuff in the additional items in the record?
Just the, the main argument is essentially that, at the time that the noise model was done, there was no building, and this was just all an estimate based on the, the program that was used.
Which is basically what I'm saying is that.
Yeah.
We're relying on a program, we don't know whether it's accurate or.
Right. Well, the one next to the swimming pool says it's to be a twenty-nine point five DBA.
That meets the test, doesn't it?
Right, it does, because it's forty-five, so twenty-nine meets the test. So, and that is actually of their testing, it's the lowest one. So, I think, I would have to say, it does meet it.
So, so is it, was anything else, when they, we did the second round of hearings, was anything else put in the record to challenge the software, or challenge those, these conclusions?
No, not, no, not during this open record period.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it, but, yeah, I would think then it meets, I would agree with Commissioner Adair, that it does meet the test at this point.
Okay, so issue item five is in regards to the secure waste disposal. Summary of comments and opposition, the waste receptacle is not identified on the submitted floor plan. Summary of comments and support, marijuana waste will be stored in a secured waste receptacle within the proposed building and under the control of the OLCC licensee. Staff comments, the secure waste receptacle will be secured and stored within the proposed building, which will be equipped with an odor control and security system. So has the applicant demonstrated compliance with this code provision? If yes, continue reviewing the application, if no, could either condition, deny the application without further action, or deny the application and continue deciding other criteria.
So it sounds like staff had decide, determined that it does meet the, the.
Just based on the applicant's response, that it was going to be inside the building.
Never in any of the other proposals, that's never been the determining factor. Does, do you have any reason it should be in this, in this case, that that should be a determining factor?
Um.
Or a disqualifying factor?
I think the, in terms of what the applicant submitted, it was sufficient for my findings to state that it would be in the building, and because they're required to have an odor control system working at all times, I noted that as well in my original findings. But there wasn't any other information in the record to prove otherwise, I suppose.
I guess I'd vote that they have met compliance with the waste storage if it's in the building.
I would agree with you.
The last topic or issue item that was raised that addresses the approval criteria was identification of applicable criteria as required by state statute. So this was, just to kind of give you a summary, essentially, within all of our land use decisions in public hearings, we address the approval criteria, for example, the staff decision, the approval criteria will be on the first page, and because there's some question about what the applicable state laws, statewide planning goals, and administrative rules are, those essentially weren't labeled under the applicable criteria. In terms of my comments, findings were made referencing the applicable criteria, but going forward, we could certainly include those specific, we can cite those specific code sections in the board decision. So I stuck that in there just as a, because it was a topic that was raised, and it's something that could easily be addressed.
So is it, are you saying it's kind of like a condition then?
It could, yeah, or a condition, or just moving forward, just making it on the record that will include the applicable criteria, applicable state laws, statewide planning goals, administrative rules, and that applicable criteria section.
Okay.
Good.
I'm good with that.
Okay, and so in regards to the next two, these are topics that were unique to this pending application. The applicant submitted their application at the, when the marijuana text amendments were adopted yet not acknowledged. So state law required them to address the applicable state statutes, statewide planning goals, administrative rules, and then there's just been some questions in, in regards to which code is applicable at this point. This is, I put this in here because they were topics that were raised, there's, you know, I, I think we could certainly have a discussion on this, but I have my comments in terms of, I guess, how we're supposed to.
And the, the opponents to this council raised these as, as, I kind of thought these were above our decision-making, that these are things that, they may be valid, but they're kind of like statewide legal decisions for the court, or for Lubbock, the Court of Appeals, if they want, they want to be raised, but they're really not the criteria that we use for deciding a grow. What are you going to say, Adam?
Yes.
What do you think?
The, probably the most obvious point of agreement between the parties and county staff on this matter frankly is that nobody knows the answer, that there is no answer, that both parties have researched it, or I've researched it, and there is no applicable case law that is saying, that is addressing this very unique set of circumstances. So the cleanest way for the county commissioners to address it is to just issue findings that address both the new and the old code, just alternative set of findings. That at least, I think, addresses point number two. I think the applicant in their final legal argument noted that they, it's not dispositive one way or the other, at least by their assessment, they noted that they can't find in a case law on point, I think the appellant's have noted the same thing. So I think at this point, our only reaction is to issue dueling findings. That doesn't necessarily address the first issue, but I think it certainly alleviates the, the impact of the, the first issue that's listed here.
Dueling findings, like a duel?
Or alternative findings, I think, I mean.
D U A L.
Yeah, we pick a code and say.
I know, well, I was just thinking, when you.
This is our best sense of which code is applicable, however, if it's not, even if analyzed under the, the old code. So let's say that the finding is drafted from the perspective of the new code provision, then we just have an alternative finding underneath that says even if the, the new code provisions are not applicable, analyzing the issue under the old code provisions reaches the same result for the following reasons. Especially with the youth activity center issue, the term did not change from the old code to the new code, the only thing that changed was the distance and how you measure that distance. But under the old code or new code, it doesn't matter, the only thing that matters is whether or not the board considers it a youth activity center. If the board considers it a youth activity center, it, it doesn't pass muster under either new code or old code, if the board doesn't consider it a youth activity center, then it does, the distances don't change the outcome.
Right. The distances don't change the outcome.
In law, we call that a distinction without any significance.
Without a different.
Thank you. Let me write that down.
So the solution to the, one in yellow is, somebody could take that up on appeal if they wanted to, and see what a higher court says, and then two, you're saying will do both, the decision under both sets of rules, so they have them. Okay, so it's interesting, all the things in red that aren't, aren't allowed to be used are a lot of the things that a lot of us care about with regard to.
Yes.
These appeals and projects, et cetera, and a lot of those, I guess, maybe would be legislative changes, if somebody wanted to go to the legislature and convince them to, the amount of water to be used, the traffic effects, you know, whatever, I mean, there's a lot of different things, impacts on wildlife, compatibility with neighborhood uses, there's a lot of that, so, but I don't.
So just to make sure I'm tracking, essentially the basis of denial for this application would be based on the separation from a youth activity center. Two commissioners have found that all nine factors listed under this example here were present and should be considered, and.
And we added a tenth of marketability or something.
Right, so that includes the foreseeable to an applicant is the fact that there's a land use decision at Sundance Meadows Ranch, recognizing some non-conforming uses, marketing, social media, for example, their website, including the youth activity center label on there with different activities that are available on the property.
Sounds good. What do you think?
Yes, it sounds like you've captured what we've been doing. No, I was just noticing that there are nine measures that are, the ones in red that are, according to our analysis, we can't talk about. It's how interesting that we had, just had nine cases that our DA is handling for marijuana that have either gone on to like federal, or they're in, on Deschutes County, so, you know, just how, how coincidental that nine is the number for today.
So unless there was anything else that you wanted to make sure that we capture in the decision, I think that's it with the decision matrix, or if you had any questions for me.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I want you guys to work your magic. I know.
Well, as we typically do, we'll give the, the prevailing party the first opportunity the first opportunity to provide a draft, because we have a very short timeframe on this one. They'll unfortunately have a very short timeframe, and then staff will take it from there. Proposed revisions, as we see fit, and then try and get it back to the board as soon as possible, so we can work through those final iterations before the deadline.
What is the deadline?
February 6th, but just as a reminder, we'll be meeting again February 3rd and the 5th.
Final review of it, final decision, okay.
Yep.
February 5th. It's going to be a big day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we have any more business to chat today?
I was going to bring up with you, Commissioner DeBonne, if he was here, but about the getting on the schedule, when we want to have a presentation on the Veterans Village project. I guess I can just bring you up to speed, and Eric and Tom are here. But so I met. So do you want to do that now, or... That's the only other thing I have. Do you have other things for today?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, let's just do them here, if they're okay. Is that okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, as I guess everybody kind of knows, we've been working on this concept of a Veterans Village, which is a short-term, kind of small or small-home project that veterans would be able to move into for a certain period of time, nine months or six months up to maybe 18 months, as a homeless veterans. So we've gotten quite a ways down the road. The leadership's been the Bend Heroes Foundation, which is Eric Tobias and Dick Tobias and son, Central Oregon Veterans Outreach, J.W. Terry and Kathy Sizemore, and then our state legislator, Sherry Halt, the city councilors, Abernathy and Barb Campbell, but they have the support of other city councilors. And then our staff, city staff, et cetera. And then we've met with the sheriff's office, and the sheriff's office went with some of the leadership. Oh, and Sam Carpenter, who was here for this last hearing, he's been kind of, as a citizen, leading it. He's done huge development projects for oil companies, so he kind of gets the development. So that's been... But he's really... He's retired and has the opportunity to lead the way, which has been kind of helpful to us, or keep us going, I guess, when we're busy with it. Anyway, the state police and the sheriff's office have liked the idea of the... Our property behind the state police's and 911 building. And there's a lot of advantages for the sheriff's office being out there, and then our stabilization and behavioral health being out there. And it's kind of a nice area. It has enough area to do the size project. So it's modeled after Clackamas County. So we met yesterday afternoon, and we're ready. You know, if we can move forward with that property, then the city can do the rezoning they need to do. They need to come up with a different code than they have now for this kind of a house, because these houses aren't, you know, buildable under a, you know, building codes. But there's... Mountain View Heating has 13 of these kind of log houses that they are interested in letting, you know, letting this be used in this for a pretty low price, I think, that are kind of like kit homes. And so we've got several pieces that are in place. And so, and the city says they're able to make these changes. Anyway, so we need... The idea would be to have a presentation. And I told them yesterday that we'll see if we can get it on the agenda maybe for next week, if possible, or whatever, as a... And then who would we want to have come? And my thought would be we'd have, like Eric explained, from Bend Heroes, Kovo coming in, because they would be kind of the partner that would be staffing this. It's also a staffing, you know... It's not a... You know, you just don't have people living there. You have people staffed there with a common eating and bathroom shower building, and then some office space, too, even for healthcare, whatever. Anyway, so is that... I just wanted to bring up, could we do that? We need to decide if we're... Really, the key thing is, can we do this property? What would it take? What are the steps? And how do we... You know, we talked about a lease versus sale, and they're open to that, as long as the lease is long enough, you know? So, anyway, so can we get that, you think, on the agenda for like Monday or something? If they're... I think Eric and J.W. are available to come.
Is there room on Monday? Yeah. So what time were we starting? Were we starting at 1:00? So we start at noon? So if we started at noon, that...
What about doing it, or we could do it at 11:00? Just that part of it, or what... What do you think, Tom?
If we can fit it in, absolutely. Yeah, as we talked the other day, I think with Nick and James, we'll kind of put together sort of a list of issues for your consideration, and hopefully to give us direction, lease versus sale, level of investment, you know, long-term needs, our involvement in terms of things like construction, utilities, buildings, you know, sort of the steps that are required. Are we the applicant, or are we deferring to the... This nonprofit has sort of shepherded through city land use and the permitting process, permitting costs, those sorts of things that we'll kind of assemble in a list for you to take a look at.
And I created one somewhat for them yesterday to just, you know, what like utilities, roads and paving, fences, foundations, and then that. We had a lot of discussion about that middle, that center building. Is it a modular one, or is it stick-built? And then the whole oversight responsibility. So, yeah, we could talk about all those things.
So we could start at 11:00, then? Okay.
On Monday? Is that... Should we try to invite them for 11 o'clock? And then we can go as long as it needs to go. And it may only take a half hour, and they could maybe put something together. Is every... So who's seen the... Or knows about the Clackamas? David, you've seen it before or heard about it?
Read about it. I think it was in the AOC.
Nick, was that?
I think it was in an AOC publication. I read about it somewhere. Yeah, there was an article.
There's a book on it. Isn't there somewhere?
On the Clackamas one?
Well, I don't... I've seen it.
Oh, and then yesterday, Hayden Homes...
Yeah, Nick toured it, actually, the Clackamas.
Did you? Okay, good. So maybe they'll have some picture of that. And then Hayden Homes was there yesterday, and they're able to build some of this stuff fairly easily. So they seem... They do farmworker housing in Washington State. They do whole projects, so similar type thing. Okay. That sounds good for Monday. Well...
Great, because I'm going tomorrow to visit the one in... That somebody wants to do in Redmond.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah, on a...
Same as this?
Somewhat.
Oh, that was the other thing, is that people in Primeville, the Veterans Office in Primeville, want to do it also, something also, and wanted to know if we could help with that. Kathy Skidmore asked us that. I said, well, further along with this.
Good. Well, and Klamath Falls is so far ahead of us, unfortunately, which is good.
They have those real houses, yeah.
Yeah, they have real houses with that state funding. Nick?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the only thing I was going to offer is, if you saw the front page of today's bulletin, at the bottom of the front page, Speaker Kotek is talking about a homeless... Proposal that they would take up this legislative session that would effectively exempt homeless facilities from zoning standards. And then that would expire, I think, in 18 months, something like July 1st of 2021. But we might want to track that very closely, because if we could expedite the whole process by not having the city amend, have to amend its code, that could save four to six months immediately and easily, and it could facilitate a much faster process. So just to bring that to your attention.
That's a good point. Representative Halt brought that up yesterday. She said she's watching that, and they're also... There's a big... They're also asking for funding, but she didn't think the funding would be necessarily applicable to this part of the veterans' housing, because it limits the amount of time people can stay there. And apparently, one of the rules for the veterans' funding from the state is it has to be... There's no cap on the amount of time. But that's a good point, and it did come up yesterday, so. Good.
Thank you, Nick. Tom?
I have some draft edits on the League of Women Voters proclamation. Do you want to take a look at it?
Excellent.
We might need our own lawyers on this.
I've seen it.
So, I'll give you a minute to look at it, or if you want me to walk through them, I can.
Great, perfect. On Valentine's Day.
That's their actual anniversary, the closest... I mean, they put the 14th. That's the closest meeting we have to that is the 12th.
So, yeah, I like all of it, except that one clause. Whereas the League of Women Voters collaborates with other organizations to achieve mutual goals, increase civic participation, create lasting change in the community. That's probably the... I like the increased civic participation, but the other, I'm... I think is where it becomes more partisan. At least, it's become that way historically. But I'm good with having nonpartisan in the first sentence, because that's... But then taking out the other place you did, that's good. I have a question about that one little clause. I'd rather...
Yeah, well, obviously, I tried to take anything that had any smack of partisanship in here. The create lasting change, I guess that, I mean, that's a neutral term in and of itself, but I guess it's the, you know, what the desired end may be.
Yeah. Well, we could just take that clause out. Create lasting change works with other organizations to achieve mutual goals and increase civic participation. What do you think, Commissioner Daire?
Oh, boy.
Dave, any thoughts?
Tom did a good job.
Yes. I think you'll be able to have dinner tonight.
You haven't voted yet.
Well, what do you think, Commissioner Daire? Do you want to take out that one clause, create lasting change?
Yes, that could go.
So we'll just put mutual goals and increase civic participation.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'd move approved... Approval of this proclamation as revised, and with the change we've made today.
Okay.
And I'll put this on the... I'll let... I'll alert the... I had talked to them after our last discussion and said the board would like to make some changes, and they said that that was likely fine. So I'll put it... I'll put it on the agenda for the 12th, February 12th, which is the closest date to their anniversary. And I know they intend to have some people here, if you would allow them to make some comments.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. The only other thing I had was, and this is just a heads up, it's not good news, but James Lewis is leaving us. He's accepted another job at...
California?
No. And I couldn't believe this, and I told him, but he's going to replace Hugh Paochek as the general manager of the Center of Owners Association.
Really?
Yeah. I tried to talk him out of it. You know, we talked about some of the things that have come up before when someone who we value is leaving to try and entice him to stay. And he's thought a lot about this and has already pretty much made up his mind. So he's going to be here for three weeks. We'll go through and make sure that we've got a plan for all the pending stuff that he's involved in. And then I'll start recruitment as soon as possible. You know, James is a very unique...
Person.
Employee, a person, but employee also in that he's got the land use background and the development background to not only manage county properties, which is the... Or the base function of his job, but also to act as the county's development project manager, investigate new things that we want to do, manage transactions, all those sorts of things. So, but we'll get right on that and hopefully have not too much of a transition. So I wanted to give...
Yeah, I'm glad you gave us notice on that. That's too bad.
He just told me yesterday afternoon, so I didn't know he was looking up.
Yesterday afternoon.
We got a notice that the guy that we hired for sled, Senator Lapineck, and I was leaving already. I'm like, we hired to say, and will you stay? Anyway.
I can understand. Okay.
Well, that's... Yeah, that's too bad, but we'll see him, I imagine, before that, so... And I know he'd been helpful on this, like on the Veterans Village. He'd been part of the group there that met with the city and talked about what we can do, so...
Dave, do you have anything else for today's enlightenment?
I do not.
Eric?
I am going to secure your signature, though, on the specific source agreement.
Oh, sweet, I have my blue pen.
I do, too. All right.
Then I believe the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.